Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council. Mayor Skip Henderson. City manager Isaiah Hughley. Pops Barnes, District 1. Glenn Davis, District 2. Bruce Huff, District 3. Evelyn Turner-Pugh, Mayor Pro Tem and District 4. Charmaine Crabbe, District 5. Gary Allen, District 6. Mimi Woodson, District 7. Walker Garrett, District 8. Judy Thomas, Post 9 at Large Counselor. John House, Post 10 at Large Counselor. Sandra Davis, Clerk of Council. And City Attorney Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council.
Morning. We welcome you to the July 9th City Council meeting. We're glad to have you all here. We've got a packed house. We've got a lot of business to take care of for the city. We also have an opportunity to recognize some folks that are doing such good work in a number of areas within our community. So, we're glad you could join us today. We're gonna start the way we always do, and that's by asking God's blessing on our proceedings here today. And I'd like to invite to the podium Dr. Walter Taylor from the Life Center Church. We're grateful that you are with us, and thank you for what you do in a community. We had a chance to attend the Public Safety Appreciation Services you did, and we thank you for backing and working with our first responders.
You're welcome. Let us pray. Heavenly Father and Creator of all, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as this city council meeting begins. It is our prayer that you help them to engage in meaningful discussions. Father, we seek blessings on the tasks that have been set before them. Bless their efforts with clear insight, their deliberations with wisdom, their work with clarity and accuracy, and their decisions with impartiality. May their personal faith give them strength to act honestly and will in all matters before them. Thank you for helping us all to complete and accomplish our work and our goals this day. Amen.
Pastor, thank you. Thank you congregation for sharing you with us today. All right, and now we're gonna invite to lead us in the pledge of allegiance the young folks from the Thayer YMCA. So if y'all would come on up, and after you say the pledge, if you would, stay put because we want you to introduce yourselves to the folks watching. So y'all come up. And the rest of you, please stand.
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Very good. If you would, if y'all wanna turn around and face the audience and tell us your name and how old you are.
My name's Caitlin and I'm nine.
My name's Andrew and I'm nine.
My name is Ada and I'm nine.
My name's Amari and I'm nine.
My name's Maddie and I'm 10.
My name is Madeline and I'm 10.
My name's Demise and I'm seven.
My name is Camden and I'm six.
And if you could, sir, if you'd tell us who you are, I guess you're...
My name is Deion McNair. I'm the childcare director at the John B. Thayer YMCA.
Y'all give him another hand.[271.08][271.08](applause) Thank y'all very much. We hope y'all come back and do that again sometime. All right, and we've got... Let's approve the minutes first. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes? Motion and second, approve the minutes from June 18 meeting. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Meetings are approved. Minutes are approved. We've got a lot, like I said, we have a lot of things going on today, but one thing we wanted to do this morning, most of you are aware, we had a, the International Cup softball tournament held at South Commons, the newly renovated South Commons. So, in essence, this was a week-long tournament with work that has been going on for two years. And we wanted to make sure that the public had an opportunity to see some of the people who absolutely... It's knocked it out of the park, to use a softball metaphor, yeah. But they just did an amazing job. We're so proud of what they've done. So, I'm gonna ask, of course, Holly Browder, our Director of Parks and Recreation, and Becky Glisten, and Mary Sherman from the Sports Council, and David, to come up to the mic. But I would like everybody who is here that had something to do with that tournament to come up and stand with them, please. You know, while they're coming, just to give you an idea of how much work goes into preparing for this, the field crew, the guys that you only see if you stick around after the games are over, because they're the ones on the field trying to get everything put together, these guys and gals actually practiced so that they could knock out that field redressing in 20 minutes so that they would not create any delays for ESPN or some of the other games. Now, think about that. That's like going out and practicing, cutting your yard and making it look good. The dedication of these individuals to get out there and make sure that they were doing their job absolutely perfect is, to me, it's mind-blowing, and we just can't thank them enough because it made our entire community look very, very good. And we did look good on TV, by the way. I did see one of those games. So, Mary, if you would, I'm gonna let you lead us off, and I know you wanna say a few words about the last week's event.
We are so proud of this group of people standing around us today. We have Ms. Ollie, who's a volunteer, our staff at Sports Council, David Boyd and Christina Stansberry, and of course, all these wonderful people from Parks and Recreation who did so many different jobs throughout the week, and we couldn't be prouder of how our community was represented to the world when they came to South Commons and to our community. So, thank you very much to everybody who played a big role in hosting the world here in Columbus.
And Holly, before you make some comments, we have, I think we've got a short video that if you would indulge us, we'd like to run that quickly. Can we get that pulled up?
All right, Isaiah, let's see.[504.56][504.56](laughter) Isaiah Hughley. At the shortstop position for the USA, batting third, number five, Jasmine Seaver. Designated player batting fourth, number 25, Julia Cottrell. In centerfield, batting fifth, number 10, Jada Coleman. Playing at first base position for the USA, batting sixth, number 23, Frankie Hamon. Batting seventh in right field, number 19, Madison Husky. Catching for the USA, batting eighth, number three, Lucy Simmons.
That is amazing.
If I can play one thing, this is something I think I will always hear in my dreams.
All right, the white and the blue, Team USA.
Hearing that every single time when our team took the field, I think it's something that gave me chills and something I'll always remember, so thank you.
Well, and sitting in the stands and hearing the fans chanting, "USA, USA," I mean, it's and at the same time, the fans were so welcoming to the teams from other parts of the globe. So, it was, Columbus did itself proud, and you folks really made that happen. And I tell you, we're so proud of our Parks and Rec folks. Holly, you wanna say a few words?
Sure. Just couldn't be prouder of the staff. We know what exceptional staff we have in our own department, and it's great for everyone else to get a chance to see a small glimpse of what a great job they do. As Mary said, it's a team effort, so everyone you see here today before you had some role to play in that. But I have to point out, the gray shirt folks, that's what we started calling them because of their gray shirts, because it was so hot, but they were able to stay a little bit cooler. But all the folks you see in gray, they are the ones who we have to truly thank for this. We had three separate days where weather hampered or tried to hamper our event, but because of these gray, the gray shirt folks, our field crew staff, we never missed a beat. Our fields were always on point. We never missed a TV time slot. We never missed a game that needed to start at a certain time. Whenever USA gave us a timeframe and said, "We need to start at this time," they made it happen. That made the tournament, that made the event. Yes, everybody played a role and had some part to play in making it successful, but they made the games and they made what the event was about, so I cannot thank them enough for the job they did. There's not nearly enough of them, as we discussed last week many times, but those are the guys who made the event, so I just wanna say thank you to them and to all who made it possible for us. We truly enjoyed it. It's a once-in-a-lifetime, sometimes, opportunity to be able to offer and host events like that, and as Mary said, you do sort of hear some of those things in your sleep because it's sort of like pinch yourself that we have USA at the greatest level here in Columbus, Georgia, which can't be said for many other communities, and we're grateful to be able to say that here in Columbus, so thank you.
Well, thank you, and thank all of you sincerely for what you did to make this community look so good and for pulling together to pull this thing off. It was no small, small feat, and to hear the head coach, which by the way, are the worst critics of any field, call our fields a cathedral, that means you guys did an amazing job. That is just, just good job. Couple of counselors want to make some comments. Mayor Pro Tem?
Come on. And you know, when you're sitting there flipping the TV channel, going through, and all of a sudden you see these ladies playing baseball, and then all of a sudden you see this big screen, this label pops up at the back of there saying Columbus, Georgia, it really made me feel proud because I knew our people had put their hearts into that field. And I just wanna tell you, y'all made us proud. Thank you so much.
Mr. City Manager?
Mr. Mayor, I apologize. I just want to make sure that we recognize Public Works as well, and Deputy City Manager Lisa, we can do that, 'cause...
Yes. Yeah, oh yeah, listen, it's a huge team made up of a lot of different parts.
Absolutely. In addition to Mary, David, and their team, and of course Holly and her entire team, just thankless, I mean, literally, they've done an awesome job, but I cannot forget Public Works. Public Works really worked very hard, Pat and her entire team getting South Commons really in condition, ready to go. Donna Newman and the engineering team came out, striped the entire lot for us, all the parking lots, and you know, got the trees trimmed and pruned, and everything looking really good and ready for our guests. And so, we're just glad to be able to provide the experience for those who are here visiting with us.
Thank you, Deputy City Manager, for reminding us that there were a lot of moving parts to this, so thank you. Counselor Thomas?
I just wanted to say, I watched a good many of the games on TV, and the announcers, excuse me for ESPN, were talking about what a great experience they were having in Columbus. And I think it was Saturday afternoon, I got a text from my nephew, and he said, "Aunt Judy, Aunt Judy, we're at lunch, and here's the Puerto Rican team." And so, it was one of those kinds of things, no matter where they went in the city, they were welcomed. And we were talking about, the only regret that I have about the TV coverage is that they didn't show the audience enough so we could pick out our friends that were there. And you guys, it was just terrific, and just thank you for all you do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor House?
I just wanted to add my thanks to that you've already heard. It was a great event. My wife and I certainly enjoyed it. I had friends go, and they wrote me and said how much they enjoyed it. So, thank you again for the great effort. You made us look really good.
Counselor Crabbe?
I was able to go to three of them, and when I stepped into that area for the first time, I just was so proud that I got a little bit emotional because it was just beautiful. Everything about it was beautiful. The people that greeted us were friendly and engaging, and it was just a fantastic experience. And I just thank you guys so much for letting me be a part of it.
Counselor Allen?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, I wanna offer my thanks to you two. We get great accolades from folks around the city for all the work that you did. You made the city look good, and that's what it was all about. You were on the international stage, and that spotlight was on Columbus, and you made it happen. Mr. City Attorney, could we create a resolution for everyone involved? I mean, to me, this is a highlight of my career on council, having the Olympics here and then having this event, and I know it is a highlight for a lot of y'all to be involved in something like this. And I would just, as a token of appreciation from the city, have a resolution drafted and present each one of these people...
Absolutely. We'll make that happen.
...of these great supporters and workers. We thank you all for what you did.
Good idea. Mr. City Manager, do you have some more comments?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to add my thanks to all of you. You, I think Counselor Allen and others have said it well, you made it happen. And as I was down at South Commons and saw everybody moving around to include engineering and Public Works, striping and pruning trees, and you guys doing your thing, especially when the games were being played, it just reminds me that you're the unsung heroes, we and sheros. We get to see department heads and division managers out front all the time, but you guys are behind the scene, the unsung heroes and sheros grinding to make it happen. And so, we only often get to see you, but we know you're there. I think about when the tornado came through and Public Works people, I went out there and they were there. You guys are there, and we recognize that, and I simply want to say thank you.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Garrett?
I just wanna thank y'all, and I think y'all lived up to the motto, "If you build it," or in this case, "repair it," they will come. And y'all did this on incredibly tight timetable, and I think every obstacle that could've been in the way stormwise has happened, and y'all still overcame that and put on a great tournament. And I'll make a motion to approve Gary's resolution.
If y'all would, go ahead and vote, and then we'll get something typed up.
All right, there's a motion, motion and a second, to make sure that all of these participants get a resolution, letting them know how much we appreciate their efforts. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? It passes. If we could, I know it's gonna take just a second, but I think it's important that folks know who you are, because we get to take a lot of bows for you doing all that work, and we want you to take your bow. So, I'd like for you all to come up, just give your name, your department, so that we can thank you. Somebody's gotta start it.[1204.24][1204.24](laughter)
My name's Craig Campbell, Park Services, and thanks for everything.
Caitlin Johnson, Recreation, and I wanna thank you guys as well.
Don Johnston, Park and Rec.
Brandon Creighton, Park Services. Appreciate y'all.
Kevin Shaw, thank you, Parks and Rec.
Vicky Williams, Salmon Road Recreation Center.
John South, Parks and Rec.
Courtney Givens, Recreation Department.
Shannon Hunter, Shelby Winston.
Kathy Dean, Parks and Rec.
Joy Hendricks, Parks and Rec.
Marcell Berg, Parks and Rec.
Cynthia Allen, Parks and Rec.
Frederick Grover, Park Services.
Chris Thaler Johnson, Park and Recreation.
Jake McTaggart, Park Services, Field Crew.
Michael Curran, Park Services, thank you.
Jerry Holloway, Park Service, Field Crew.
Eddie Lunsford, Park Services, Field Crew.
Darlene Wade, Park and Services.
Annette Hines, Park Service.
Vivian Gettis, Park Services.
Jonathan Holloway, Park Service.
Paul Day, Park Service.
Justin Johnson, Park Services.
Charles Daniel, Park Service.
Michael Dean, Parks and Rec.
Anita Taylor, Parks and Rec.
Ken Fitzpatrick, Park Services.
Tex Owens, Parks and Rec Athletic Division.
Kiana Adele, Parks and Recreation.
Janet Langen, Recreation Services.
Mike Freeman, Parks and Recs.
Gerald Woodman, Parks and Rec.
Cody Freeman, Parks and Rec.
Walter Burger, Park Services, Field Crew.
Teresa Snatta, Recreation Services.
Bryant McKissick, Parks and Rec.
Holly Tarver. We give glory to God and thank Him for the blessings that He has brought upon this city. Coming up to the very first Olympics for 1996, I said, "I don't have time." God said, "Oh, yes, you have, because it's coming, because of Me." I put on my shoes and everything else, went all over the valley, even up Fort Benning, and this is the reason for the International USA Cup as of today, and thanks to all that are part of our beautiful city that was established here in 1828.
Daryl Scott, Park Service.
Jacob Hopkins, Park Services.
Carson Revel, Athletics Division.
Josh Browning, Athletics Division.
Tommy Gross, Park Services.
Christina Stansberry with the Columbus Sports Council. Also wanted to thank all of our volunteers who couldn't be here today. We had numerous volunteers throughout the week. The entire CSU softball team came in off of their summer vacation and volunteered all week long. Ms. Ollie Tarver is one of our volunteers who were there. We really couldn't have done this event without them as well.
Is that everybody? Yeah, I was gonna say, I hadn't seen Becky up there.
David Boyd, Columbus Sports Council, proud member.[1556.51][1556.51](laughter)
Becky, get up there.
Becky Glisten, Parks and Recreation.
But we wanna thank you. Did we get everybody? I hope we didn't miss anybody. Guys, thank y'all so much. If you would, join me, oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Barnes?
I just wanted to thank, I just wanted to thank you, Mr. Mayor, for having each one of these individuals say their name and be recognized, because you know, throughout the years, these individuals here is rightfully verbalized by members of council, y'all are the ones that really provide the amenities, the many amenities that this government does for the city. So, I'm so glad that you, that you did that, that you had each one to stand before the mic and give their names, so our community can see each one of them and say thank you.
Well, they are the folks that make this community so special. And Mary and Holly and Lisa, if you would, get the names to the City Attorney's Office of all the individuals that participated, and we'll try to get a copy for everything. Y'all join me in thanking these individuals one more time.[1625.61][1625.61](applause) We wanna thank y'all for indulging us in that. It took a little bit of time, but it was worth every second to thank these folks that worked so hard on your behalf as members, not only of the community, but also of this region, so, thank you. And we've got a couple of other proclamations that we're gonna present, and I think Counselor House has these. One is in recognition of Reentry Awareness Month, so if I could get the individuals that are here with that organization to come up to the podium. And we also have one that we've, we have established a Mayor's Commission on Reentry because of the persistent efforts of Alicia and a lot of the other folks that are involved in that committee, because it's critical that we provide opportunities for folks who have done time, paid their debt, and now are looking to move on with their lives, and we need to be able to help those individuals. So, I know Counselor House has been very involved, Counselor Barnes has been involved, so I'm gonna turn it over to Counselor John House and let him... Did I get you? Sorry. Bruce is a little quick over the hit-your-button again. There we go.
Right, there we go. Thank you, Mayor. It's certainly a privilege to have the opportunity to read this proclamation. Whereas over 2.6 million Georgians have a criminal record on file with the Georgia Crime Information Center resulting in the collateral consequences of as many as one in four Georgians likely facing barriers to obtaining employment and housing, the right to vote, and are scarred with negative stigmas associated with having a criminal record, and whereas, these returning citizens are not only an integral part of Georgia, but of our great city of Columbus, and deserve to be recognized for their positive efforts and contributions made to the city and its local economy, as many are respected leaders and business owners within their communities, upstanding, law-abiding citizens and our taxpayers. And whereas, reentry, when fully implemented, helps shape a positive narrative of the experience, provides human dignity and respect which impacts the thinking and mental acuity of each individual, and empowers returning citizens to refrain from crime and incentivizes law-abiding behavior. And whereas, supporting and bringing awareness to reentry will not only bring restoration to families... to families, build stronger communities, and ensure a more just society, but will remind us that returning citizens are encouraged and motivated to become productive individuals, be supported in their efforts to successfully reintegrate, and should be afforded the full rights of a citizen. And whereas reentry has a new face full of compassion and kindness, as old impressions and stigmas associated with having a criminal record are abolished, and gives returning citizens a voice and a vehicle for the expression of their humanity here in Columbus, Georgia. And whereas Columbus, Georgia receives a significant number of returning citizens each year who will need to be supported, encouraged, welcomed, and given access to necessary resources that are critical to their success. And whereas the city of Columbus wishes to join New Life Second Chance Outreach Incorporated in celebrating and supporting its returning citizens during the month of July, now therefore BH Skip Henderson III, Mayor of Columbus, does hereby proclaim the month of July 2019
Do I turn it on? Is it already on? Okay. Thank you all very much. It is George, Columbus, from my understanding, I think the last time we applied for the first time was in 2016, we were told that Columbus had never had a reentry awareness month, so we were very proud of that. And we've also gone the next step to also get it approved by the governor, so not only is it recognized in Columbus, it's recognized throughout the state of Georgia, which was the very first time it has been observed, and it's also very special because it was requested by somebody who is also a returning citizen, so I'm very proud of that. And I just wanted to, the whole purpose of it is to recognize that I am a firm believer in no taxation without representation, and I feel that because you have a criminal record, you are still a citizen of this community, and it should be respected, and we pay taxes like everybody else pays taxes. We want to raise our children just like everybody else want to raise our children, and it's very difficult to do that when you cannot get a job, you cannot get housing, you cannot get grants to go to school, you cannot get, up until 2016, we could not get food stamps because of certain charges on our records. And so, just to be able to see the importance of how can you expect someone to be successful if you're not giving them opportunities to be successful? And everybody has made mistakes, whether they were criminal mistakes, whether you had a baby at 14, whether you did something as a child, and nobody wants to be reminded of what they've done for the rest of their life. And I feel that when people serve their time in prison, they should not have to get out and serve another lifetime of being homeless and unemployed and not being able to have access to the resources that we need to be successful. And I think when people are given these opportunities, when people with criminal records are given those opportunities, you will drastically see the crime rate go down, because people will do what they need to do to take care of their families. So, it is, this whole month is to not only just talk to community members, but also to speak with employers, to let them know the importance of hiring people with criminal records, hiring them based on their skills and not on their records, so that people can be up, because when people have jobs, there's a certain type of confidence, it's just like a makeover, it's a boost of confidence. And when you have a job, you tend to less want to go out and hang out and do what other people are doing. It's like idle hands, idle hands is the devil workshop. When you have a job, you do what you need to do, and you get to pay taxes, and then you get to become a taxpayer, and you can buy a home, and you can do those kind of things, which allows us to be more productive. So I really thank Columbus for embracing the efforts that me and my organization have done since we've opened in 2014. We've had to close our doors through, through 2016, in 2016, but we've kind of been still keeping up, and since 2014, we've around about helped over 300 felons find jobs, and we would like to thank those 300 less people that's out there still committing crimes. And I try to keep in touch with most of them, and at least 80% of them have not returned back to prison, they're still working in their jobs, and they've advanced to do other things as far as going to school. So I think that's a great thing, and I think it's a great opportunity. So I thank you all for embracing this opportunity and not seeing me as a felon and seeing me as Waleesha, and I really appreciate that, as well as the, the city of Columbus, and thank you all so much.
We thank you for what you're doing, and if you would, we're going to let you, I've got the proclamation copy for you. If you want to shake, come around, shake, let us shake your hand. And don't leave the podium yet. I'm going to ask the other members of the board that are here to come forward, because we do have a proclamation that is sort of publicly announcing the formation of this commission, that is, it's a Mayor's Commission on Reentry. And, you know, I, I just, I want to say one thing, and that is, people ask me every day, what can we do to help with poverty? What can we do to help with crime? This is it. Give, this is one way you can help if you own a business, is you can give felons an opportunity to get reintegrated back into society and, and, and begin to build that self-respect that comes from knowing that you, whatever happened in the past is the past, and now you're working on building a life for you and your family, becoming constructive members of, of the community, so.
Thank you, Mayor. Read this next proclamation. Whereas the purpose of the Mayor's Commission on Reentry is to be a vital information hub to support local collaborative efforts to assist, collect, develop, coordinate, share, and provide local reentry resources to justice-involved individuals within the community, as well as adults being released from incarceration to Muskogee County residents. And whereas the mission of the Mayor's Commission on Reentry is to reduce crime, victimization, and recidivism, as well as decrease the barriers to a successful reentry for returning citizens by connecting them to the resources they need to be successfully reintegrated and, and become productive and self-sufficient citizens within their communities. And whereas there is a need to strengthen collaboration between law enforcement agencies, corrections and supervision entities, resource agencies, social service, and nonprofit organizations, community faith-based and nonprofit organizations, community members, private and public stakeholders, and productive justice-involved individuals. And whereas when justice-involved and returning citizens have served their time, they should not be subjected to a lifetime of being denied the basic necessities needed to reintegrate successfully and be productive citizens within their communities. And whereas with access to housing, employment, food, clothing, education, healthcare, mental health treatment, transportation, and other vital resources, justice-involved individuals can provide for themselves and their families, lessening their chances of reoffending, which also makes our communities safer and allows them to contribute to their communities and our local economy. Now therefore, BH Skip Henderson III, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, does hereby call upon all local citizens to join me as I declare July 2019 as Reentry Month and officially
I'm going to ask all of you, if you don't mind, introduce yourselves.
Of course, I'm Waleesha Wilson, the founder of New Life Second Chance Outreach, and I want to first thank city councilman House, and I get emotional because I have been screaming this for years and years and years, and to be able to come out of prison and sleep on the bridge for a month, to not be able to get housing because of a felony, even though I had two master's degrees and was working on a doctorate, to be able to get to a point where I'm able to educate other people, I'm really invested in second chances and opportunities, and I really appreciate city councilman House, as well as Walker Garrett, me and me, a lot of the other y'all really like friends, a lot of y'all who are really taking the time to see me as Waleesha and to support the efforts of my organization, but I really appreciate you for taking the time to listen to what I was saying about the importance of having a reentry council, because we get, Columbus gets a third of the people that come back home from prison. And besides Atlanta and Savannah, and Maken's Rowan as well, we should have this in place to be able to help people that come back home, so people won't have to experience what I've had to experience. So, I really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
I'd like to add one thing before the rest of them introduce themselves. Waleesha, thank you for bringing this issue to me, because I never realized how, how serious it was, and so I'm just thankful that we met and had a chance to have that cup of coffee, so, thank you.
Now, I need the rest of y'all to tell us who we are.
Norman Quarles, founder, CEO, Impacting Generations.
Good morning. I'm Keith Mitchell, serving currently as the Chair of this council and looking truly forward to the opportunity to undergird and support the efforts in our community. You know, sitting there looking at the, the issue with the Olympics and everything, Columbus is cutting edge, and this again speaks to the cutting-edge thought and energy and efforts that's put into really taking care of the citizens of Columbus, Georgia. So, I'm excited to be a part of an opportunity that will be able to network, undergird, become a hub for individuals in our community so they become whole again. Thank you.
I am Kristen Barker. I'm the Program Manager for Hiring Well, Doing Good in Columbus and in Phoenix City, and I, I know we're all so thankful for the commission, for this opportunity to be a part of this movement and this group, and I do, I do believe it's a movement. I'm very thankful to Waleesha for taking the steps that she's taken to, to be prelude to what, what is happening now. And so strongly believe that any person who's been incarcerated, it is just not right to make a mistake, even two mistakes, and never have your whole life be affected by that. It, it could be me, it could be you, it could be any one of us in this room in that situation, just as Waleesha found herself there. So, we've got to come together as a community to support the ability to create a way out, to create a way to protect everyone, to strengthen our economy. This is going to affect Columbus in great ways, and so I'm very thankful to the mayor and to all of you for the opportunity.
Hello, everybody. I'm Jeanette James, excuse me, and I'm, this is very near and dear to me. Although I haven't done anything wrong in Columbus, I have had, (LAUGH) I have had my issues in my hometown, and so to be able to work for the city as a felon is the best thing that ever happened to me. I've been here nine years, and I appreciate it wholeheartedly. Also, I also go to the jails, I go to Phoenix City Jail, and I go to the Columbus jails to talk to the women and try to let them know that if I can change and not go back to jail, then they can too. I want to give them the hope that there's something different to do with their lives.
Good morning, council. My name is Michael Forte. I'm an educator in Muskogee County School District, and I just want to thank councilman House and the mayor Henderson for giving us this opportunity to give back to our community. It's a humbling experience to serve and to help those who are in need. You know, the Bible speaks about this, about individuals in jail. When I was in jail, you visited me, and so we're thankful that we've given the opportunity, because the only way that we're going to make our community better is that we avail ourselves to help those who are in need and to not stay on the sidelines, but to get in the game. And so I want to thank Ms. Wilson, because she's actually one of my, well, was my parents, well, one of my parents at early college, I had the opportunity to be a principal for her daughter, and also to work with her, and then so that just further is an opportunity for me to work with her. She's a passionate lady, and I'm so proud and happy for her, because I know she's been at this for a while, and so to see this come to fruition is just a blessing, and, and I know that she gives our honor to the Lord above for everything that has happened. And Columbus is a great community, we just always got to do a little bit of our part to make it just a little bit better. And so we thank, once again, the mayor and councilman House for their leadership, and Ms. Wilson for theirs, and for the rest of these board members as well. It's an honor to serve with them. These are great people, and I'm not sure why I'm with them, but, but I hope that they allow me to serve with them, continue to serve with them. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
And Mayor, I'd also like to thank you, because when I came to you with this issue, you didn't hesitate. You stepped right up and said, "This is something we need to do." So without that vision and that willingness to step out, we still be trying to figure out what to do. So, thank you.
Thank you. I think it's critically important in this community that we, I think it's one of the cornerstones of us continuing to improve all areas of our community, and that's, that's essential. And we've got a number of councillors that want to make comments. Councilor Crabbe.
Congratulations, Waleesha. Oh, she, your tenacity is impressive. You, you know, you take steps back, well, you don't take them, you get pushed back and you never stop, you just keep on pushing forward even harder. And it's, it's an example that you're setting for the whole community, and I'm just very proud to, to, that this is happening with you today. And Norman, thank you for everything that you've taught me in the last year or so. I'm naive when it comes to things like this, and education is an important part of seeing another side of an issue. And I do believe that this is an important part of facing crime head-on and dealing with it. We deal with it in a different, in a different approach, because the last approaches have not been successful. I see this will be successful, because it's giving you guys, it's giving our community and individuals that have, want to change and want to be better, an opportunity to do just that, and it'll improve the whole community because of it. And I just thank all of you for the part that you're playing in helping us take Columbus to the next level.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Woodson.
What can I say, my sister? I'm very proud of you. You believed in it, you stuck through it, even when I told you it's a hard journey, but it could be done. And Mayor, you need credit too, because you didn't turn your face, not once. I remember when we sent the draft, I remember when I met with Waleesha and House, and I said, "It needs to go under the mayor, because he is the Public Safety Director." And God heard your prayer. You are that poster child. Ms. James, I've always had to admire you, I admire you even more now than ever, because this is it, it's about dreams. Government cannot do everything. It takes the people that have belief in something to fight for, to educate it. Even if we close the door, you continue knocking at that door. You never gave up. You continue the fight, and that makes you the hero, that makes you the champion, not only for the city, but for yourself and others that you represent. And it's true, Columbus is growing. Lots of people say that we're not that of a great city, but I say differently, because we do listen. Sometimes we're slow, but we do listen. And as far as I'm concerned today, you're the hero, because without you, this will not happen, and the people that were behind you. But the great thing is, the great leadership we have in our mayor, that he believed in it also, and was willing to take the step. And that's the highest respect that we can give to one another, is to believe in each other. And you're going to make people's life change, you'll be remembered forever, and thank you for never giving up. I know your children are very proud of you today, and they'll always be, and thank you for being who you are.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Barnes.
I think that Charmaine summed it up, as she said, tenacity, as far as you're concerned, because you're like a bulldog, you didn't let go, and you kept the course. But I, I commend everyone here for, for your efforts, because we all know this is an area that really, really, really needs attention. But I've known Minister Jay for so many years. I worked with Jeanette at the Urban League, and even back then, you were advocate for those individuals, many of them, Jeanette, who didn't know anything about your background. And many times when individuals came in at the Urban League, when you reached out to them and divulged to them about your background, and see, that's what you've got to do, unless you've been tested, you don't have a testimony. And you've been a very, very, very advocate, as Waleesha, as everyone here. And she has a, is it, have you written, this is a question now, have you written a book about that little thing that they hid from the prison to the pulpit? You need to do it, because I do know about your background, and we know God is awesome that can reach and hit Jeanette, because there's not anybody that's going to tell Jeanette anything, because she's been there and done that, and she's a true testament, as you are, Waleesha, that individuals can turn their lives around, and need to have the opportunity to do so. And I see one of my adopted sons here, Dr. Forte, here, and Keith, and ma'am, thank you so very much. And Norman Quarles, thank you so much. Your name is known in the community for reaching out for people, so we just thank you so very much for all that you're doing.
Thanks, sir. Mayor Protem.
I just want to say to you all, thanks for picking up the cross and carrying it. This is Zeradidamine, because my husband, the biggest thing in his life is trying to get the reentry done in this community. And my husband, Councilor Barnes, Ms. James, Herman Johnson... And my husband, Councillor Barnes, Ms. James, Herman Johnson, they really dedicated their life to this program. We couldn't get it going like we wanted it to, but you all came along. Everything happens in its time in its own season. I just want to say, carry it because now you got followers following.
Thank you, ma'am. If y'all would come around and let us thank you again, and I'll give you a copy of the proclamation. (applause) I tell you, there's a secret sauce in this community, I've said it many times, is the people. It's people who are willing to step out of their comfort zone to try to help others. Muhammad Ali was credited with saying that the service you give others is the rent you pay for living here on earth, and these folks are paying their rent. So, I appreciate them very much. All right, we'll turn it over now to city attorney.
Thank you, mayor. Hope everybody had a good fourth. We have got a few public hearings and a couple of business items to vote on. The first hearing up is an ordinance that will amend the text of the Unified Development Ordinance to allow self-service storage and warehousing by special exception only in the Uptown and CRD Central Riverfront districts. Been recommended approval by Planning Advisory Commission and the Planning Department, requested by Mr. Henson. He's here. Mr. Horner is back there. But Mr. Jones, if we have some questions of council, now's the time.
Doesn't appear to be any.
Okay. Appreciate you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Henson will vote on this in two weeks at the next meeting. Could be a 5:30 meeting. Appreciate you being here. Next public hearing is the ordinance for the levy of the school system millage in Columbus. Twenty-three point three-two-one mils. It's the same millage rate as the previous year. Any questions around the table or the audience on this? All right. We'll vote on this in two weeks. The last first reading we have listed is the housekeeping measure on Columbus Code, section thirteen dash one-seventy, for exemption for nonprofit entities from all of the rates for solid waste at the landfill. Council has already, by resolution, approved a discount, but this is just a housekeeping measure in the ordinance. Any questions about that? We'll bring it back for a vote. Now, for a couple of resolutions that need action. We've got Mr. Morgan. I did see Don Morgan here. He had to leave, but the Airport Commission has approved a resolution requesting this. This is two airspace easements, or treetop easements, that you may have heard of in the past that are needed for safe approach and departure from the airport, so it authorizes a filing of a declaration of taking. And we just need approval of that, mayor.
Motion second to approve. Any discussion? If not, Michael, you want to cue it? Councillors, if you would, please register your votes.
That has passed. We'll get an action filed on that shortly to take care of those easements. The last item, we'll call the nominee up in just a second, but we need a vote on a resolution appointing Claudretta F. Williams as clerk of Recorder's Court.
Motion and a second to approve the appointment of Ms. Williams as clerk. Any discussion? I guess, Michael, we have that in queue. If y'all, if you would, please register your votes. She is unanimously confirmed.
All right. Ms. Williams is confirmed, and mayor, you want to call her up?
Yes, if you would, please come up so we can all.[921.01][921.01](applause) Welcome, and congratulations.
Thank you so much. Thank you. I just would like to say that I am grateful. I am humbled and excited about being given this great opportunity to serve the citizens of this community in this capacity. I am ready to go forth and do the work we need to do to get Recorder's Court up to par and where it needs to be and get it on that Columbus level where we're headed and be progressive. So, I look forward to working with the senior judge, Judge Hunter, council, the council committee that governs Recorder's Court. And again, I'm just excited, and thank you so much for the opportunity.
Well, we are excited that you are going to be taking over that position. We look forward to great things, so congratulations to you.
Thank you so much.
Any questions for Ms. Williams? Yes, Mr. City Manager.
Ms. Mayor, I, I know her father, and I believe she has family here, and I, she might want to recognize her family and friends. I see some preachers in the audience.
Well, all of her supporters, if they would stand and let us thank you as well.[1007.32][1007.32](applause) It's quite a support team. Looks like we made the right choice, counsel.
They are amazing, yes.
And she's a red devil.
And she's a red devil? Okay.
Red devil at Central High School with Waleesha and stuff.
Well, again, we look forward to working with you, and thank all of your supporters for helping to shape the woman that you are so that you are ready to take on this challenge. So, thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.[1042.44][1042.44](applause)
People did good work.
I never knew.
You never knew. All right. Okay, mayor, our last item is up for discussion. We've had previous discussion on take-home cars and the city vehicle policy, but I'll let you turn it over to the committee members who have some recommendations.
Okay. We have had some members of council who've served on a, a committee to take a look at take-home cars and, and it sort of expanded, and I believe they've got a report that they want to, to present today, so I'll call on councillor Allen.
Thank you, mayor. Deputy clerk of council is handing out a copy of the final draft for our.
Excuse me, sir. I might want to let the room clear before you begin.
Good idea. You should all have a copy of the final draft in front of you. Before I get into the meat of this, I'd like to thank the committee, councillor Mimi Woodson, councillor Judy Thomas, and councillor John House for their devotion and dedication and working with, with us all through this and putting up with their, their chairman. We asked, when we started the committee, we asked John Redmond, our city auditor, to participate with us to keep us in line and keep us also educated on different routes you can take as far as numbers, and he, he proved to be invaluable. The first meeting we pulled together, we invited Drell Short to come in and present and talk about the fleet management so we could get an understanding of that operation and how it intertwines with all the departments that have the use of city vehicles. We found her to be also an invaluable part of this, and we asked her to sit in and stay with us through the entire. She met with us every time and also proved to be an invaluable asset. As we began walking through the nineteen ninety-five take-home committee report, we quickly realized that the environment has changed, and we broadened our scope to include the advent of use of technology and also some legal aspects that we'll get into in just a minute. We met with each city agency and department head who, who have the use of city vehicles and/or a car allowance to gather information on how they use the vehicles and to what extent. The focus of the committee was to develop a policy which best serves the city regarding our budget and our financial situation. The policy will be reviewed at least annually by the committee, or at any period anyone has a question or a concern about the process, the direction it's going, or want to have a discussion about possible changes, we will be glad to meet at any time. What I'd like to do now is just walk through the eleven items that you have in front of you and basically summarize. Items one and two create a new policy to allow public safety and certain governmental employees to drive a city vehicle to their residence, not only in Muskogee, but Harris, Talbot, and Chattahoochee counties. This, if you recall, this was probably the initial, what got us to this point of calling for a committee was several requests came to council to discuss this. Item three prohibits the driving of city vehicles to a residence across the Alabama border. Alabama does not recognize our sovereign immunity, and we will talk more about this in just a minute. Items four and five clarify the conditions under which a public safety vehicle may cross the Alabama border, and that basically involves in the act of pursuit of public safety. Item six and seven clarifies it is the responsibility of the employee for the maintenance and pre-operational checklist of the assigned vehicle, along with, talks about disciplinary action if there is neglect. Item eight allows the flexibility in the policy to address any changes for an employee if they are required to travel in the normal course of their job. It opens the door for an employee or supervisor to bring to our attention the need to have a car for this particular employee in their daily operation or some type of allowance. It allows that discussion. Item nine gives direction that all written notifications regarding this policy will be sent to the city manager. And item ten clarifies when an employee shall participate in the, in the required training courses of the city as needed. Item eleven clarifies the approval process for those employees who are on duty for a specific period of time. It allows the option of a car allowance or a payment of mileage and describes the approval process. And going back to item three, the Alabama border issue, we met with the mayor and the city attorney regarding our sovereign immunity issue. The mayor has had discussions with Attorney General Chris Carr, and we've also had conversations with the city attorney on how best to address this in our policy, and that's why you see, according to the legal, legal community, we, we need to prohibit cars from going across Alabama. It just opens up litigation, and we do not want to go down that road. The, I guess the goal in, in this outreach to the attorney general is to allow us to have the ability to work with our neighboring communities, both in Alabama and Colum, and Georgia. If there's a situation such as Bow regard, for example, we had, we have the technology to go find folks who have been caught in a, in a crumbled house or under debris. We could not send that technology over there and help them because of the sovereign immunity laws. So, we, we are asking the attorney general to look at this and not just for Columbus, but for all border communities with Alabama. So, we suggest that council consider, and I have asked the city attorney to, the committee has asked the city attorney to draft a resolution to accompany the mayor's letter to the attorney general to put this in front of him as a request from Columbus. So, we will bring that up in, in just a little while. The next item we wanted to talk to you about is items one and two. In opening this up to allow vehicles to be taken to the adjacent counties when they drive home, our, our budget and analysis and cost of that, we, we feel like it would be somewhere in the fifty to sixty thousand dollar range. I'm going to ask councillor House if he would give you more specifics on that at this time.
Okay. Councillor House?
Thank you, mayor, and councillor Allen. We thank the city manager and the finance department for the analysis that they did, which used the standard GAO or IRS mileage rate, and that number came up with about two hundred thousand dollars as far as what it would cost us in the budget. We felt the gas alone was probably a better way to look at it because that GAO number includes maintenance costs as well as a, a different gas cost than the city faces. And so, we took a look at, using the chart that was compiled, the, the highest average miles per day was twenty-two miles per day. If you divide that by fifteen miles per gallon, then each car uses about one and a half ga, more gallons per day if it's driven outside the county. Well, I used a cost of two dollars per gallon for the price of gas, even though the day that I did the analysis, Columbus was paying a dollar and seventy-nine cents per gallon. But if you multiply that, one point five gallons times two dollars, because that's three dollars per day per car that it's going to cost. I was not sure of the number of days that we should use for, for law enforcement officers' public safety, so I decided to use the marshal's shift because I work Monday to Friday. And so, assuming two weeks of vacation, no sick days, no holidays, that means an officer works about fifty weeks in a year or two hundred and fifty workdays. I think this is probably overestimating the number of days that they work, but still using that, so two hundred and fifty days times three dollars per day times the sixty-six cars that would be going outside, it came up with forty-nine thousand five hundred. Still, you know, there's probably, we won't know for sure until we actually, you know, have people drive, but we're estimating around fifty thousand dollars is what we think it would be the budgetary impact on allowing the cars to go into the additional counties in Georgia.
Mayor, excuse me, mayor, if I could just, give me about another two minutes, then we'll open it up for questions and discussions.
Yes, sir.
As I mentioned in earlier comments, we, we saw that, that the environment's changed, so we, we ask IT to come in and talk to us about any technologies that may help us in getting a handle on take-home cars, car allowances, mileage driven in the daily function of the employees. And we, they called in one of our vendors, Verizon, and Verizon has a system called Verizon Connect. And basically, it is a device, they have a device that you hook, hook into the city car, and it tracks just about everything that you need on that car. It, it has a maintenance schedule. It sends an email to the employee or the supervisor to remind them when the car needs a change.
Sends to both.
Sends to both. You can set it up any way you want, to department head, supervisor, that kind of thing. There's pretty much unlimited use in that realm, but it also tracks routes that they drive, the speed if the car's in an accident. It sends a notice to get emergency vehicles there on the scene. It also, if they run into a problem, it alerts for roadside assistance, and also it tracks the mileage. It's unlimited user, so you can cancel it anytime, has a lifetime warranty on the, on the hardware that we put in the, put in the, in the cars and trucks. And it also interfaces, interfaces with our GIS system. So, it's, it's a seamless operation. The cost of that is to buy the harness, which is a small device that goes into the, into the, installed into the car, can be installed by our staff. Drell quickly told us that we have the capability to do that ourselves, so we'll save any of that, all that cost. The harness itself is thirty dollars, and then there's a nineteen dollar a month fee associated with the tracking and the connection of each of those in the, in the cars and I don't want to speak for Drell, but some of her comments were that she was very impressed with this system and thought that it would enhance.
into the car, can be installed by our staff. Drell quickly told us that we have the capability of doing that ourselves, so we'll save any of that, all that cost. The harness itself is $30 and then there's a $19 a month fee associated with the tracking and the connection of each of those in the cars and vehicles. I don't want to speak for Drell, but some of her comments were that she was very impressed with this system and thought that it would enhance our ability to extend the life of the vehicles that we have currently. And she thought it would, the initial fee of the harness and the monthly fee is, would certainly save the city money over the years. We proposed that tracking the mileage for several months and then those reports being sent to the city auditor for reporting back to the committee and then us to deliver to you. The harnesses can be installed, like I said, by our shop and the, those employees who have a car allowance, the IT department introduced us to a couple of applications that can be downloaded on their city cell phones that would also basically track their mileage. It's a very simple application to utilize. We could perform this over several months so that we can have data that provides the council with the numbers that would show where they're driving and how much they're utilized. And we even thought about developing a car allowance range. If you drive certain miles in a year, then your car allowance is X. If you drive more than that, then it goes up a little bit and if you drive over a certain amount, and that can be set by council, we talked about a range there. So we did a survey, we asked the city auditor to survey some similar sized cities on car allowances and it, just to kind of walk through real quick, Chatham County, their car allowance is $250, $350 and they pay 58 cents per mile on personal use. Augusta Richmond is $600 to the city manager and then they only pay 40 cents a mile for their personal use. They are phasing out take-home vehicles, no take-home vehicles allowed out of the county and no mileage for out-of-town trips. Athens Clark is 500 to executives and some department heads, they pay 58 cents. Albany, Georgia, $250 to $750, which is paid to the city manager, deputy city manager, city attorney, and some department heads. And they also utilize 58 cent mileage reimbursement. Savannah pays from $400 to $500 to city executives and some department heads. And again, the, several options, several ways we can go in this. We could choose to do nothing, leave it as it is, or we could track the mileage for a year, several months and try to get a handle on who's driving, how far they're driving, and what the car's being used for. And Mayor, I'd like to open it up for questions and further discussion at this time.
Mr. City Attorney, I think you had some comments.
I didn't punch you in.
Or city manager, I've done that again. I'm gonna have to get, I have to remember who does what.
You have to get an attorney.
It's only been six months.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and just, you know, I had some comments on item number one and 11 and Councilor House just addressed his mathematical formula for calculating the projected cost for gas only, and that's gas-only $50,000. And so, of course, I had our finance, our professional finance staff to do some calculations. And these are just concerns that I emailed to each the mayor and council members for your consideration. And I sent those to you because I feel as city manager, I have a responsibility, a fiduciary responsibility, to provide you with a budget impact now and in the future, and that is what I have attempted to do. And so I have, you know, no objections to the notion of public safety vehicles going out of county, but we need to understand the budget impact and be prepared to finance the plan, if you will. And so when I asked them to calculate the total budget impact for going out of county and under number one, they provided me with an estimated cost of approximately $2,900 per vehicle per year for additional fuel and maintenance costs. We can't just consider fuel, we've got to consider maintenance because maintenance will increase as you, your miles go up and it's going to have wear and tear and depreciation on the car. You're not going to get the same number of years if you add this additional mileage. And so what the budget office prepared and shared with me is that this could add hundreds of thousands of dollars to the city's annual budget. And they did an immediate projection based on the current 41 public safety personnel driving vehicles out of county. Their immediate projection is $203,254.27 and I did provide a chart. And when they looked at this immediate projections, other things that has to be considered or was not clear, is not clear, is that if officers are allowed to use the vehicles for part-time employment, and they are, will they be able to drive to part-time employment in other counties? And an example would be if, for example, I know a deputy sheriff, I saw the sheriff here, and I know one person lives in Cuthbert down in Chattahoochee County. And so the question that's unclear is if they live in Chattahoochee County where they typically drive their vehicle home, will that person now, of course, be allowed obviously to drive the vehicle home on their off day or when they're on vacation? They drive the vehicle back to Columbus to do their part-time work at the movie theater? And so obviously, there's additional fuel costs that hasn't been considered if you were considering the marshal's office as a model, Monday through Friday. The question is, will that person be able to drive, say, well, I've got a vehicle now, I can do Harris and Talbot and Chattahoochee County? Will they now be able to drive to take a job in Talbot County? Can they drive from Chattahoochee County over to Talbot County to their part-time employment? Or from Chattahoochee County to Harris County because now I've got a vehicle and there's no gas issue for me? That's not calculated in this. And the question is, can an officer now in Columbus now drive and take a part-time job in Chattahoochee County, Talbot County, or Harris County? Because I can drive my public safety vehicle to Chattahoochee County, Talbot County, or Harris County for my part-time employment. Your field calculation perhaps did not capture this because we don't know this. And so it would not impact just the 41 if that occurs, it opens the door to every single public safety person to now drive out of county for part-time work. Those are just questions that are not answered and projections that we can't make it this time. And so, you know, and then, you know, just down the road from a legal standpoint, you know, and I've said to the city attorney, as this grows, will some officers, public safety folks, say, well, there's a value to that that I don't receive and I live in Muskogee County? There's a value. And give me something equivalent to that value. Things obviously don't pop up until they get going good and then you see something else that you didn't see coming, and so that would be a concern. And I, the concern with me is that are we providing an incentive for officers to move out of county rather than provide an incentive for officers to move into the county? I mean, if, that's, we may be, it may be an unintended consequence. We're incentivizing them now, you can move to Chattahoochee and Talbot and Harris, you don't have to live in Muskogee County. And so they all migrate to the suburb where they can get more for their money. And so we have 41 officers today that will receive this incentive and I just don't know and we need to think about how is it going to grow and how fast is it going to grow? In 10 years, we may have 100 officers that's now doing this. And so then when it grows to a point that it becomes an issue, how is, how will the mayor and future city councilors reverse it? They're going to go to public safety and say, well, it's gotten out of hand and we're going to take it away from you. And so, you know, that's a concern and then, so, you know, what has been provided by the finance staff, they, the way they calculated the cost, if you live in the 41, they know exactly where they live and they went to the fire EMS station that's closest to traveling to that county. And they calculated the miles from the fire station to their home and back. And they did it for the number of workdays and they came up with a number. And things that we don't think about that I want to make sure we think about is the original intent. The original intent for the public safety take-home car program was to ensure or increase citizen taxpayer benefit. I was here when they wanted to increase the police presence in neighborhoods and around apartment complexes to make people feel safe and make them safer. And so if all of these vehicles, you know, start to migrate out of the county, you have to ask the question, are we diminishing the citizen taxpayer benefit, the original intent? And so that is a question in my mind, you know, about police visibility being diminished because we have fewer vehicles in the county and we're out in the county now, in the county they're going to feel, I got a police officer next door with a car sitting out there. And from a fire EMS standpoint, I even thought about that, I've heard the chief talk about when they go on a fire call, they leave the station, you know, it's open, there's no one there and they've had people actually go into the station and take their personal belongings because they know everything's running hot, fire truck's gone, ambulance gone, and they go in and basically rob the station. And so the public safety vehicle, when they park them at the station, is a deterrent. Says to them, there's two police cars over there, don't go over there, the fire truck's gone. And so I wanted to share those thoughts and concerns and, you know, we ought to do whatever it is we're trying to do, but I think we need to think about things perhaps we've not thought about. And then when it comes to number 11, I think any, you know, we offered people, department heads, many of them, a car allowance as part of their recruitment employment packet. And I don't disagree with what has been, what appears you're trying to do, but I think it should probably be on a going-forward basis. You know, the morale of department heads is not where I would like it to be when it comes to pay, when they look across Phoenix City. I saw this morning, Phoenix City's going to give a 2% raise October 1st and they're going to give a 1% April 1st. They're, the fire, the fire chief over there makes more than our fire chief where they've got a $30 million budget. We've got a $285 million budget. We've got 200,000 people, they got 30,000. The city manager makes more than the city manager over here and gets a car allowance and all that. The engineering director makes $20,000, $30,000 more than our engineering director. And so when you look at Savannah, the Savannah city manager makes $238,000. Pay me $238,000, I'll take a $250 car allowance or $500. The city manager in Augusta makes over $200,000 a year. You know, and Albany, the city manager makes more than, so I just want to make sure we, so when it comes to the department heads and the car allowance is for, was basically for the inner-city travel, the local travel. The 28 cents a mile, the reduced IRS rate is for when you go beyond 50 miles. And so when I ask staff, well, how much did we pay in the 28 cents a mile outside of 50 miles? And in fiscal year 16, it's $973, in fiscal year 17, it's $2,056, and 2008, fiscal year 18, it's $2,900, and in fiscal year 19, it's $3,600. So for underpaid department heads and the car allowance being a part of their salary packet, we, I just don't know if the juice is worth the squeeze. On a going-forward basis, it's an understanding coming in, but to go and take away something that employees have been accustomed to, I can tell you from personal experience, it is going to cost them to travel if you take the 28 cents a mile away. I know because I've been on both sides, with a car and with the 28 cents a mile. It will cost you. And so I said to, and I'll close with this, I said to the mayor the other day, I've got to go to the International City County Managers Meeting in Nashville in September. Without the 28 cents a mile, that's a five-hour drive. I'd drive to Nashville any day of the week. Five hours. I can drive up there and come back the same day. But if it's going to cost me to do the taxpayers' business, I'm going to go to Columbus Airport and I'm going to fly to Nashville and I'm going to get a taxi to the hotel and back to the airport and fly back to Columbus. So it won't cost me to do taxpayer business. And so I just caution moving too swiftly on this without considering the commitment made to department heads when they were hired and taking the $3,600 away from all department heads combined, in my mind, the juice is not worth the squeeze to damage the morale of your underpaid department heads. And for public safety, I know you're willing to add that expense, but consider the unintended consequences and consider the position it's going to leave future elected officials, the mayor and city council. If they had left that to you to have to reverse today, I question how you would do it. And so I ask you to just proceed with caution. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilor Craft?
Mayor, if I could.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Councilor Allen, we wanted to...
Just, just real quickly, we appreciate the, as I said, we met with the city manager twice and the mayor twice on this and talked through the issues. We appreciate the city manager's comments and we called a special meeting to discuss the comments that he provided and we did take action, made some changes in some of the, to some of them. The numbers, as John, Councilor House called out earlier, the numbers that were crunched by the staff utilized 52 weeks of working a year. We know no employee works 52 weeks a year. So we're already paying for depreciation and maintenance on the car, so we took that factor out. We just tried to look at the use of fuel. One of the department heads in public safety said they could, they could cover the cost of the additional fuel in their current budget. And again, I want to remind everyone, this is a fluid document. This is something we can revisit and make changes at any time. So if we see that there is, I don't foresee this, but if there does occur where a lot of city employees or public safety are moving out of the county to take advantage of this, we can make a change, we can take it away. So it's something that we will continue to look at. It is a good point that you brought up about the part-time work and other, and other adjacent areas and I think we ought to address that in this document, that we ought to prohibit that. If they want to go work on their own time, then they can do that, but can't utilize a city vehicle in that job. I agree with that. The original intent of the police presence or take-home vehicle, I also agree with you on that and I think... you on that, and I think it can still be utilized for those officers that live in, live in Columbus. The, the one thing that I pointed out early in the, in the presentation is, you know, we saw the ninety-two policy and this two thousand and nineteen policy, it, there, the environment's changed. So we, we've got to do something different here to, to try to not only give the Columbus Police Department the ability to recruit, and they said that this will help them. So we're gonna try to, we were trying to do something to help them recruit and enhance our, our numbers in the police department. And then two more quickly, the, the salary, in number eleven, you were talking about the, the salary of those employees who do have a car allowance and the car allowances to enhance that salary. Looking at salaries was not a part of our scope, so we, we didn't get into that. So we just looked at the allowance and we note that, for example, the Civic Center Director had a car allowance and all he does is drive, or that person at that time, all that person did was drive from home to the Civic Center. And I just didn't see a need for him to have a car allowance. But, and there are some other employees within the city that have a car allowance. And I thought that, I think the committee as well thought that there may be some, some things that we can look at there. If he's gonna get a car allowance, maybe it should be less than six-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars a month. And that's where we came up thinking about, talking through the range, you know, how much is it utilized? How much is the car used? That kind of thing. So that, that's, that's where we, where we headed down that road. And the second part of your number eleven, talking about the, the additional twenty-eight cents a mile when they travel, in our survey and talking with the other communities of similar size, we found no other community that offered that. And we even found no other business that offered that type of, of additional compensation for driving. So we, we tried to take all the information we could and put it into this document for council's consideration. We can, this is a suggestion, this is our report, we can massage it and take it in small bites, we can, we can pick certain departments and put the harness in and test it and see if it works, see how it works, if that's something we want to invest in. There's a lot of different ways, a lot of moving parts, and we can do it a lot of different ways. And so we, we like to work with you and try to move forward, take step, baby steps if you want to.
Well, and I want to say, Mayor, I don't disagree with you about certain department heads, like Civic Center, that's a great example. I absolutely agree with your approach. And we are going to be recruiting a new Civic Center Director. And if it's on a going forward basis, we should apply that. But I just, you know, I just have concerns with going and taking away what's there and that, because I, I think there could be some legal concerns in that, so, but, but there are those that I could go through and tell you. And I agree with absolutely that one, the one that you picked. That, if any, if a car allowance at all, yes, I agree with that.
Well, we, we pulled together a lot of information from the nineteen ninety-five policy. And, and I think back then, in those days, there was to some degree a range in salary, I mean, in take-home car allowance, or car allowance some part. And, and looking back at that, the car allowance at that time ranged from fifty dollars up to two-hundred-and-ten dollars a month. So, you know, there was a range at that time. How we got away from that, I don't know. There's also a part of the code that addresses car allowance and that that car allowance is supposed to be brought to the council for approval. And if, if a person vacates a position for whatever reason, then that car allowance goes away and you have to start all over. It, it's not something that we are supposed to be utilizing to enhance people who come to Columbus, in my opinion. If that car allowance is gonna make or break whether a person stays or not, then I think they're already gone, in, in my opinion. But still, just wanted to make that to that point. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, thank you. Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you. I just have a couple of questions. How many of these cars are in Muskogee County, Harris, Talbot, and Chattahoochee? Do we have enough, out of those sixty-six, how many are in each of the counties?
Yes, we, we have, we were provided all that information and...
Do you have it, that we could write it down? That we know?
Well, we'll get it to you. I don't, I don't want to call it out. Take time to call it out.
Okay, sounds good. And then I, I just would like to have some more clarification on number six, where it says all employees who are issued city-owned vehicles are responsible for the periodic maintenance and upkeep of the vehicle. Does that include financial?
No, no, no. Item, item six and seven was at the request of Drill Short. She informed us that there were times when employees had neglected the proper maintenance of a car. For example, they didn't change the oil when it needed and they just kept driving it and the engine locked up and, you know, you gotta buy a new engine. And she said that's happened more than one occasion.
So on that occasion, does that, does that employee take on that extra expense because they did not maintain it properly?
No. They did not. I would say...
In that occasion, what, that employee does not need to work for us, period.
That's what you said. That's what you said.
I, I get that. They, they did not, it wasn't their responsibility to change it, it's their responsibility to take the vehicle to fleet to be serviced.
Okay, I understand that.
And if, if we have employees who are driving our vehicles and it's not gonna cost them anything and they're at work anyway, and you don't take it to fleet to get service and the engine locks up, that's an employee that I don't want working for us.
And they're told that, they're told that it's time to have a talk about policy.
Yes. So if, if Ms. Short has people doing that, it should be getting to the deputy city manager and to me. And they will not work for us.
Counselor Crabbe?
Okay. That answered my questions. Thank you.
Is that it? All right. Counselor Thomas?
A number, as Counselor Allen said, a number of the concerns that the city manager brought forth, we, we did discuss at great length, I think, and came up then with, with this proposal. There are just a couple of points that, that I would like to bring to your attention. One is in item number three, this is the city-owned vehicles may not be driven to any residences in Alabama except for these conditions. And it's our understanding in talking with department heads throughout the city that the only, the only department that this affects, that, that the state or federal agency oversees the local agency, is Muskogee County Prison. And the two deputy wardens currently live in Alabama. And because of the state or federal requirement of their response time in case something happens either at the prison or dealing with the prison, that they can drive their cars, their city vehicles, home. They would be the only, the only employees, as we have been told and understand, that fit this description, that there is a state or federal requirement that you respond in a given amount of time. So, and I think that one of the things that we discussed over and over and over again was trying to work out some kind of an agreement with Alabama about the sovereign immunity piece. And we do think that Attorney General Carr is gonna be very helpful to us in that, in that situation. And hopefully, it won't take us another however many years to get that done so that our officers who live in contiguous counties, and that's why we said Harris, Talbot, and Chattahoochee, they're contiguous to Muskogee, contiguous Alabama counties would also be able to take their cars home. This is a really important, I think, deal to the committee that we need to make sure that those kinds of things are taken care of. We also talked about some of the, well, one of the examples that the city manager gave was the, the police car being parked at the fire station. It's my understanding, and if this is not correct, it needs to be corrected, but in every fire station at this point, when the truck leaves the station, the, the bay is closed and locked. There's a garage door, if you will, that comes down and closes and locks the door. If you go to a fire station right now where they're, the firefighters are in the station, you can't get in without, because the outside doors are locked. So that piece has been, we think, taken care of, and the, the fire chief did not raise that with the committee when we, when we talked with him. And I think one of the things that I want you to, I want everybody to understand, the committee is trying to do what is best for the city in order to provide transportation to those employees who work for the city. We're not, our goal was not to, how many of these can we reduce, what can we take away, but it was if we have someone who is working for the city, we want them to be able to have the optimum conditions to do that. And so we were not looking to take anything away. And in item number eleven, it says that at the time of employment or at the request of the employee of the, or the supervisor, this is when the determination would be made. We talked a good bit about, is this retroactive? And I think we, while we didn't take a formal vote, I think this language helps with that, that at the time of employment, or if the supervisor requests, then we'll take a look at whether or not the car allowance and how much and, and that sort of thing. We did say that this would be looked at periodically, but at least annually. And Counselor Allen and I had a conversation about if there is a concern by a department head, once this gets into place, or by the city manager or whatever, please bring that to our attention. Otherwise, we won't know that there's a concern and we can deal with it and we can, can try to resolve it or bring something to the committee. But I, I want, I want, if nothing else goes out of here, for people to recognize that the, the goal of this committee was to give our employees what they need to do the job for the city of Columbus. And that, that includes all employees who may have a city car or a city allowance, or may not, or whatever. We think that it is appropriate that we treat our, particularly our public safety employees in the same way, that if they live in Muskogee County, they currently can drive their car home, if they live in a contiguous county. And I believe, and the committee members may correct me if I'm wrong, we don't have people on the public safety who do, who live outside of Muskogee or one of those three contiguouss, except Alabama. We have, we have one who had a legal address somewhere else, but that person does not live there. They, that's not their usual residence. So we're looking at the contiguous counties and we're trying our best to get Alabama to come to their senses and give us the sovereign immunity that, that we need. We did talk to the police chief about the Metro Task Force. We currently have officers in Muskogee County, in the Columbus PD, that are on that Metro Task Force that regularly are in Alabama for that Metro Task Force. Those officers are also sworn officers of the departments in Alabama. Sheriff Taylor, Heath Taylor in Russell County swears those people. So that covers their immunity, if you will, because of their work condition, not because of their residence. So we've been doing this since November, I think, so we've been making hay slowly, I think. And we will continue to take a look at it as, as issues come up. I learned an awful lot being on this committee about vehicles in the city of Columbus and what's there and what's, what's available. So hopefully, we'll be able to put a policy in place that will answer some of those questions and concerns. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Garrett?
I do want to thank the committee for all the hard work y'all have done on this and I appreciate you bringing this to us. The city manager did raise some very good points and I would hope, and y'all may have already addressed this, but if there was a way that we could, I don't want to tie the police, police hands as far as allowing people to take them out of county, but there are added costs with maintenance, there are added costs with mileage if somebody's driving out of county. We lose the visibility of having a police guard here, so if there's a way that we could incentivize them to stay in Muskogee, allow the take-home cars out of county, but find some sort of way, there's just some sort of perk, because we're also losing on tax dollars, too. I mean, it's, it's a myriad of things that I'd like to keep them in Muskogee if we can, but I don't want to penalize somebody for living out there, but if there's a way we can create some sort of incentive to keep them in Muskogee, I think that's a big part of this program, at least on the police side. I mean, I got one car that's parked at a church in my district and every time I see it, I know it's empty, but I still slow down when I see it. So I do think anything we can do to get that aspect back in Muskogee would be great, but I do want to give them the tools to recruit, too, so.
Thank you, sir.
I think that, Mayor, if I could, the...
Sure.
The police chief mentioned in his, back in the budget process, he mentioned several ideas to help incentivize recruiting. And I think we ought to, as the next part of the budget process, we ought to begin to look at a lot of those things to incentivize, as you said, to live in Columbus. I think that was part of the city manager's concern. It was part of ours, too, when we, when we met with him. But they say that there are those that live outside that would come work here if they could take their car home, so it would be an incentive. So as you know, we're short manpower there and lady power, and we sure need, we sure need to do what we can to try to incentivize them to come to Columbus. Thank you.
Justice Barnes?
For one, who sees an immense benefit for the police service, I feel safe when I see police cars. I mean, I think it's huge. And I think that that's one of the ways, incentive ways that we can use to keep. I was shocked to hear that we're down ninety officers. And one thing I'd like to say, I know we have a committee for everything. I think it's huge. I think that's good for us to do, have some committee members at this committee here and the recorder's court that can look at all the issues, take the time, because we are part-time as far as to produce areas that need to be, for certain departments. Talking about the police shortage, this is, this is huge. I'm here, I walk the streets every day. And you know what I'm hearing? I'm hearing the fact that we need to have more blue and whites, and it's not the chief's fault. Always here, the, the chief of police needs to have, it's not the chief's fault. We as a council need to jump on this issue and do something about this here. And I'd like to request to have a committee that we can look at this. I know that Mike Baker and myself were on it, we were on the other committee. And we did, we put some of the officers on the street in, as well as the chief and his commands there to address this problem. We have a problem right here that we need to address, and I think that I, I would feel comfortable if we had a committee looking at that. Speaking about this issue, the city manager brought up a lot of valid reasons why we need to slow this up and look at these issues here. And it also gives time for our, the citizens that we represent, the ones that we're supposed to verbalize in their concerns about issues. Allow the committee a chance to masticate this and chew it and then get back to us on concerns that they may have and suggestions. And so I'd like to have a copy of all your concerns. I know you brought up some valid points that we need to look at that deal fiscally. And so we really need to slow the train a little. And so we really need to slow the train a little bit on this issue. And I'd like to also see a committee. The citizens that I see every day are concerned. And I tell them it's not the police chief. And I have individuals who are related to me who work for CPD. And they're telling me, and they're supportive of the chief. But we have to take some kind of relief on these officers. And so we need to come up with ideas where we can start keeping some of the personnel here when they are fine. And one of the incentives, by the way, is, so I'm for that. But we need to slow the train a little bit for some of the issues that the city manager verbalized.
Thank you. Councilor Woodson?
Yes, I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to be on the committee. This is my first one in all the years that I've been here. We just started building committees. And it's very beneficial to us as a city council member, because we are part-time. We rely on staff, and we rely on other people to make our decisions and the little bit of research that we do. There's a lot of questions, there was a lot of comments made about the officers there, where they lived. I don't have my book here, and I don't think anybody in the committee does. But we had a list of where everyone lived in order to determine the miles. And majority of our police officers, a big chunk of it, does not live in Columbus. They do not. So while we're talking about it, we need to be careful.
Majority of them do.
Yeah, okay. Oh, opposite. Majority of them do. Few of them do not live. But because of our real estate in Columbus, people tend to move to Phoenix City and other areas to live, because they can get more property for their tax dollars. So there are other things that we need to consider when we compare ourselves with other communities. Other communities have other things that we don't. We have caps on our tax base. You know, there's a lot of things that work in this bowl. It's not just one or two items. So like, as part of the committee, I'm glad to hear another part of it. We did get the city manager's email and conversation. And that's what's healthy about it. That's what a committee is for. It's for people to voice their opinions, to find a happy medium for what's best for our city and for our taxpayers. I think it's healthy to disagree. As long as we respect each other, and we find that common ground for the better good of the citizens, not us as an elected official or those who serve the citizens. So I'm happy to go back to the table and continue the discussion. We have not been in no hurry, if you heard Council Allen mention. We've been at it since November 2018. And we are in July 2019. I don't think we are in a quick process. We're just trying to find the right solution. This isn't a done deal either. We can come back and massage it and fix it. So I'm very excited. And anybody else who has more comments and concerns that they can bring to our attention, it's important. And you're right, it's important for our officers. And I'm like you, I'm like you, Walker. Every time I go to work, there's an officer parked at a certain place, his car. Every time I pass it, I slow down, too, when I see him, his car there. So it does make a big impact when you have a police officer in the community. There's some issues we have to work on that. And Councilmember Barnes, I agree with you. I think we need to put a committee together to address those like we had in the past. And not only address them, but try to implement something so that our officers are more visible. But at the same time, we got to get our community to embrace our officers. Because sometimes officers are afraid. You know, they're doing their job, but they're afraid when they go home. You know, when they leave, they don't know if they're going to be back tonight. So it's a little bit of both that we have to look at. It's a bigger picture, and it takes time. And we're not going to have the right answers, and we're not going to satisfy everybody's needs. But I think if we work together and try to do the right thing for our community, we would continue to be a great community that we are today. And thank you for the feedback. I think it was interesting, and I thought it was great dialogue today. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilor Barnes.
Yeah, I don't want to give the impression I think this committee is Russian. That's not my intent. But what I'm saying is that, what I, what we're here for, each of us here, to represent the citizens. So you can have all the committees get together from now to end, I don't know. But it's the citizens are the ones that we represent, and really need to have the input. We need to hear from them. So I'm not saying that you all are Russian. I want the, our citizens, pay their taxes. When we're here to represent, to get the information, and to call you and the, and all of us and give their input. And I have members of my family on the police force. I'm 150% for CPD. And I like the cars in the community. I feel safe. But what I'm saying is that we need to slow down. And some of the things that the city manager brought up were things that I think a lot of us hadn't even thought of. So when I say slow down, it's allow the citizens to hear what we're saying and get feedback to us and to consider the concerns that the city manager has.
I agree. Councilor Allen?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm somewhat embarrassed that I didn't say this earlier, but let me say to the clerk of council, Sandra, I want you to know how valuable Lindsay was to our committee. She is, she literally is with child and due in September. And she literally labored through this committee. She was at every meeting, dedicated, on time. Even when I forgot my key, she unlocked the door, let me in. I mean, she was there every day.
She let us in.
She let us, yeah, several of us.
And reminded us.
Lindsay, thank you for your dedication and devotion to helping us, taking minutes and even providing, yeah, comments during the meeting. She offered some valid points to us. So thank you for all you did to help us.
Yep.
That's good.
Thank you. Councilor Thomas?
One thing that I do want to address, that the city manager addressed, about the public safety, taking their cars to a part-time job in Harris, Talbot, or Chattahoochee County. Our officers cannot now have a part-time job in a contiguous county representing themselves as a Columbus police officer. They cannot wear their uniform. They don't, they don't do any of that kind of stuff. So I would think that they, that the chief would have in his regs that you cannot drive this car to a part-time job. They can't take a part-time job in another county representing themselves as an officer of Columbus Police Department. So just wanted to clear that piece of it up. Thank you.
Okay, yes, ma'am. All right, yeah, listen, thanks to the committee for taking a look at this issue. And I applaud them for allowing this to continue to unfold. I don't think there's any, as I heard, there's no sense of urgency to react to the recommendations right away. In fact, what I did was open the door for communicating and investigating a couple of the other items that were brought out. So good work by everybody. And, you know, I think, I think it is important that we kind of look at this stuff on a regular basis, because our, as Councilor Allen pointed out, our environment has changed and is changing by the minute. So we're going to continue to look at it. And I know that they'll bring back any hard recommendations that they think ought to be considered by council.
That's all we had listed today, Mayor.
Okay. Well, we've, we'll move into the public agenda. And I want to remind the folks that are appearing on agenda that they'll have five minutes in which to talk and address council. If there's an issue that you're asking council's action on, then you will not be able to comment past five minutes. But if they have a direct question to ask you, you'll be allowed to respond. And then if you don't get a chance to finish, you can come back at the end of the meeting, and we'll let you wrap it up with three more minutes. All right, so first we'll call, and Ms. Wilson, did you still want to? That's all right, come on, come on up. Just state your name and your address, please, ma'am.
My name and my address?
Name and address.
My name is Walesha Wilson, and I live in Columbus, Georgia. Mine won't take five minutes. I just want to give an announcement of the events that New Life Second Chance Outreach is having for Re-Entry Awareness Month. Tonight, starting at 6:00 PM, we will be doing voter education, but it will be online via phone conference. So if any of you could join, we would like that. It's called You've Got Power, Know Your Voting Rights. It will be from 6:00 PM to 6:45 via the FreeConferenceCall.com. We will be specifically trying to target individuals who have criminal records to let them know their voting rights. A lot of people do not know that in Georgia, having a felony does not exclusively bar you from voting. You can vote with a felony. You just cannot be on probation or parole. A lot of people do not know that. So we've had people who have been off probation or parole 20 years and have not voted since then, because they didn't think they could vote at all. So we want to reach out to those people, as well as people who are able to register vote, who just choose to not, who just choose to not exercise. Basically inactive voters, as well as LGBTQ community. And that'll be from 6:00 to 6:45 tonight. We will be having a dine and donate fundraiser at Panera Bread on Friday on Macon Road from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM. And we're asking all of you all, as well as the community and the public, to go out and eat at Panera Bread this Friday from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM. And we have a flyer. If you need it, I can send it to you. So before you pay, just show them the flyer and let them know you're there to support us. And we get 20% of those proceeds between that time. Because we are a self-funded organization. When I say self-funded, it's a Walesha funded, but it's a self-funded organization. And so every little bit helps. July 18th, we will be having a Dress for Success workshop and a business attire clothing giveaway. So if any of you have any clothes you'd like to donate to those who will be in attendance, once we have the 30-minute workshop, they will have an opportunity to pick from business attire for them to be able to have. And we're going to talk about the do's and don'ts of what to dress in. And all of our events are targeted for people with criminal records, but they are open to the public. On July 27th, from 12:00 noon to 2:00 PM at the Mildred Terry Library, we will be having a social media 101, which basically is, a lot of people are employed, I think, because of their social media presence. A lot of people do not realize the importance of their social media presence on the impact of them looking for a job. So we want to educate them a little bit more. And that will be July 27th, from 12:00 noon to 2:00 PM at Mildred Terry. Space is limited to 15, and I will be paying for lunch. July 30th, from 10:00 in the morning, this is the big, big day. July 30th, which is our one-stop-shop re-entry job fair. I started this job fair about four years ago as a one-stop shop, because usually when you get out of prison, they give you $25 and a bus ticket. So when you get out, you don't have transportation to go to DeFects one day, to go look for a job another day, to go to school to do this. So the purpose of this was to put it in the mind frame of anybody who just got out of prison that day, to have everything they need in one room. And so we will have housing resource agencies, we'll have homelessness, we'll have people there for transportation, we'll have free blood pressure checks, we'll have everything that you may need in that one room. And Friendship Baptist Church has been so generous to sponsor this event, and we will be having it there. That is a Tuesday, July 30th, from 10:00 in the morning to 1:00 PM. And that'll be at Friendship Baptist Church in the A.W. Fortson Building. And we are still in need of some vendors, maybe specifically a minister, as well as some mental health representatives. If anybody's interested in being a vendor, it is free. You can contact us, and we can make sure that we can get you there. Also, if you have a business, you would like to have an opportunity to come out and meet some potential job seekers. We're asking you to come out and be a vendor as well. That same day during that time, we have Georgia Justice Project. We'll be coming from Atlanta, a group of attorneys who will be doing a understanding of your criminal record and how to correct your criminal record in a separate classroom from 10:30 to noon. And then that evening, from 5:00 PM, will be another dine and donate, but it'll be at the Applebee's on Airport Throughway. And that'll be from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM, as well if you need the flyer. It'll be on our Facebook page, as well as our website. Or you can call me and say, Walesha, send it to me. I'll do that. And at 7:00 PM, I will be making an announcement about a change in me personally, as well as with the organization. So if you all could come out and celebrate that announcement with me, that would be a great, great opportunity. And I'll be doing that at exactly 7:00 PM. But I will be at Applebee's the entire time, from 5:00 to 9:00 PM. We're seeking volunteers, we're seeking sponsors, and several of you are sponsoring, so I appreciate that. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. We got one question. Counselor, Counselor Woodson first.
That was a long list.
Yes.
So can you? Yes, ma'am. Can you email that to the clerk of council or to us?
I sure will.
So that we can have it, and then we can check our calendars for availability?
Yes, ma'am.
To be able to support you. I wrote some of them, and I'm having some technical issues, so I left the room, so I wasn't able to get them all. And two, there might be some city manager, if we can put it on the access channel, so that that way the citizens who are not watching, would not be watching, can see it during our, you know, later on in the evening, in the next seven days, or however long it is, so it can be publicized.
Okay.
So that, that way people can know, or if someone heard and say, well, I want to know about this, they can watch our access channel access and find that information.
Thank you. And the city of Columbus will be there as a vendor, so that's a great opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor, Mayor Protem?
Ms. Wilson?
Yes, ma'am.
You said something about donating some clothes. Is information on where to donate them?
We will actually just, right now, since I'm in transition. Anytime before then, if we can get somebody to bring them there, that would really help out. And I think that'd be the 18th, which will be right here at the Macon Road Library. So if somebody can come out, maybe 10, maybe 30 minutes before the event to bring them and drop them off, we're going to be having them set up around the room in areas. If not, and you just need somebody to pick them up, just call me, and I'll figure out how to get there to come get it for you. But it would prefer if you could just bring it that same day.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. All right, next is Ms. Amber Clark from Columbus Airport Commission.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So I'm here today to speak a little bit about our Forward with Focus campaign and our key, oh, I'm sorry. Our key element to this campaign is our terminal modernization project. I did come before the city council back in November to speak about this. And I wanted to give you a little bit of an update in regards to that, as well as talk about our Forward with Focus campaign, and to request a waiver for some associated fees with this project. So this is our mission and vision. Some of the mission is highlighted in green, represent Columbus, Georgia region, meeting the air transportation and economic development needs of the community and its customers and partners. The reason why these are highlighted is because it's consistent with our Columbus 2025 initiative, our Chamber of Commerce mission, our Planning Department mission, and our visitors, our Columbus Visitors Bureau mission. So we want to make sure that we are committing to our economic development of our community and serving our community's needs. So we are a gateway to Columbus. We are, for air travelers, we are the first and last impression that people have when they come to our city. So we want to make sure that we're consistent in the message that we do amazing. And how we're going to do that is we're going to showcase our community within our terminal. So we kind of saw some of that back in November, and I'll show you some slides on that today. We also want to make sure that we're exceeding our community's and our visitors' expectations. So we're looking at different amenities and services that will kind of put us a step above and help people recognize us as a hometown airport. Of course, air service is very important to our community. It helps with our economic growth and our bringing our visitors here. So we are determining our community's air service needs. We're working with local businesses to kind of find, figure out where their travel destinations are, what airlines they're looking for, as far as our leisure and military as well. Right now, we have a 94% leakage, meaning our region, 94% of our region is actually going to Atlanta-Hartsfield to travel. So city manager, I appreciate your traveling with us. But we are looking to find out what our needs are so that we can better service those needs and transition that number to a lower amount. We want people to be flying out of our airport and supporting us and supporting our community. So again, we're going to showcase our city to the airlines. For airlines to solicit a new route to a community, it's very competitive. Airlines have very limited resources. Other airports have limited gates. So you're competing against many, many other cities and many other airports, many communities. So we have to do a good job, us, the airport, to go to these airlines and say, this is our community, these are what our needs are, this is what our economic development looks like. We know that these routes are going to be successful, and we need you to come and serve our community. But we have to be able to show support. We need to make sure that we are educating our community on what we need from them. So letters of support, statistical data, you know, just using the airport, those things show airlines that our community is committed to the airport, and they will want to bring those routes to us. So these are the design aspects. We took it from our natural features, the red brick, our textile mills, our, you know, beautiful woods and river. This is a top-down picture. This is a top-down picture. You can see the floor has a wavy design to kind of illustrate our beautiful river that we have. The walls look blank. It's because they do not show the paint color, or this is open space where we will display different aspects of our community, as far as our local businesses or our attractions, other features within our community. All the counters will look the same. You can see how beautiful the floor looks. That's more of a realistic drawing. So, from our rental car counters, our airline counters, and our gate counters. This is the waiting area. We talked about providing better amenities and services. We will have entertainment in this area. The long walls that are blank will also showcase some of our community assets on there. And we do have electric power outlets in all the seating, so people can use that to charge their devices. And we do have a bar-type sitting area for those who want to do business as well. This is our gate area. We're super excited. We're going to showcase our military support for our servicemen and servicewomen. Obviously, the walls are blank here, but we have some ideas of how we can do that, because we want to make sure that our community, our travelers understand that we support our military as well. I think this is my favorite picture. So, this is what people will see when they walk into the airport. They'll see the brick pavers, the wood panels on the top, the blue color of the river, and decals on the windows of all the things that we have in Columbus and that we're proud of. So, this, sorry, this is the very last slide. So, this project is $19 million. Obviously, it's to update. The terminal was built in 91. The FAA, federal government, has committed 64% of the funding. State has committed up to 3%, which leaves us with 33% still needing to be funded, 6.3%, and we're working on that. However, here today, I'm asking to request to waive some of the building permit fees to help us reduce those costs. And that's all I have to say today.
Okay. And thank you for your presentation, and your time is up. But what we'll do is stay close, because if anybody has a direct question, we want you to be able to answer it.
Okay.
Counselor House?
Hello, Ms. Rock. I think you can probably imagine what my direct question is going to be. Since you mentioned showcasing the community?
I'm sure.
Are you looking at honoring Eugene Bullard, the first African-American military combat pilot from Columbus, Georgia?
Yes, and we are. We're very excited. You came in and had some presentation on that. So, in our gate area, that's kind of where we are looking to do that. We've got several ideas, and we're excited to do that. When we kind of get the, we just had the bids come in. So, we need to kind of get the gate area built first to figure out how exactly we want to do that. But once that's done, which will start in October hopefully, then we can start working on that, yes.
Okay. I've talked to her before about Eugene Bullard, because he is the first African-American military combat pilot from Columbus, Georgia. Flew in World War I, so.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Okay. Any Counselor Woodson?
Yes, hi. I have a couple of questions, and he just gave me an idea too. Could you consider looking at the Boerinken 65th Infantry Battalion? They did training here in Fort Benning. They came from Puerto Rico. They were recruited. It was 100 soldiers.
Okay.
And they just started acknowledging them not too long ago. But there's really not a lot of, not in our local area, and they were here to train, not being recognized. So, I would appreciate if you look at that and see if that's something we can add to show even more diversity in our community.
Absolutely.
But my main question, that just came up because House mentioned that. My main question for you is, how does it work when the cost to fly? Because a lot of reasons why people go to Atlanta is because it's more expensive to fly from Columbus, at times, because there's times I flew from here, and it's been cheap. But majority of the time, it's a little bit more expensive. So, the perception, even though it's not a reality, it's a perception, and sometimes perception becomes a reality, is that you hear in the community that it's expensive, or there's a delay, and they missed their connection. Whether that be true or not, that's the perception in the community. And I think that if you just wear your blue jeans and T-shirt and walk around and acts, you'll hear that quite often, that some people will say, "Well, it's cheaper for me to have somebody drop me off in Atlanta and fly out, or I can play groom and fly out." So, that's one of them that I would ask. How do you figure that? And if you don't know, you can just tell us later, or is that part of the development of it?
Absolutely. So, you're right, that is a perception. Sometimes it is very, it's cheaper actually to fly out of the Columbus Airport. It kind of depends. We're kind of stuck because we only have one airline. So, the key is to bring competition, and it's kind of the chicken and the egg thing, because if we don't fly, then we can't bring a new airline in. But it's education, you know? It's getting out there and talking to the community and letting them know, you know, if we can get another airline in here, those airline tickets will drop significantly. You know, our service is better now. I know in the past, there were delays and cancellations, but we've come a long way, you know? And it's having those extra services, or the convenience of easy parking, or, you know, less money to park, and kind of justifying all the additional costs that you would get when you travel out of Atlanta. But it's education and working together and trying to get those extra airlines in here.
Well, I commend you and the committee, because I think it's awesome. I think it's fantastic. Because I know when I, I try to fly out of Columbus, because to me, it's more convenient. But if it's real expensive, I do just like everybody else, I go to Atlanta. But I try very hard. But what I do like, when I've come into other airports, and even Atlanta, you know, when you come in, that's the first thing you see, is the feature of their community. I love the sense that you said, "Welcome to Columbus." I think it's a great thing. I think you're in the right path to bringing people more to it. I would even suggest, and I know it's not on there, but even an area for the kids to play, because there's always time when you go to the airport, the kids get a little antsy from waiting. And I think if you had an area where they can play and the parents can sit there, I think that would be, today is like my colleague said earlier, the times have changed, and it's a fast-moving. I'm happy to see that you're putting for iPhones and things, because that's what people look for. One thing I would suggest that you do, because it's hard for me, a lot of people do not have souvenirs from Columbus, and people be looking for it. I know when my relatives come here, I'm running all over the place. I know my aunt came several years ago, and we had to go all the way to the peach factory to find the little peaches, salt and pepper, you know, peaches, because she was just determined, hers had broken, and she was determined she wanted another one. And it was hard. It was very hard in our city to find souvenirs of our city. So, I think that would attract people more, because if someone's looking for something, they'll say, "Hey, I know who has it. The airport, they're open all the time. I can run over to the airport and get one." So, just something for you, you know, to think about, that I think will be important, and I think will draw people to it. I like the fact of the music. That's really great, because if you have local talents that are willing to take their time to display it and entertain people that come in, that will drive people just to come and listen to the music.
Right.
And then say, "Hey." That will educate people of what we really have. So, I think you're all doing a great job. I think it's a great concept. Just a couple of things for you to consider. I'm thinking traveling with children and even the elderly, you know? We have to consider them too, you know, the wheelchairs. You know, sometimes when you go to dinner, and I experienced this a lot with my mom, sometimes when you go to dinner, the tables are set, and when your wheelchair pulls up, I'm just giving you an example, pulls up, it stops. So, the person's about that far away, you know, from the table. I take a tray with me and kind of, you know, substitute it or amend it. But that's something for you guys to also think about in the process as you're remodeling those entities right there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And you know, Ms. Clark will be glad to answer any questions, but we will bring you back for a more in-depth presentation on the airport, because I think it's critical that we all understand the impact we have on it and it has on us. But I think Ms. Clark is here today to specifically request a waiver of some fees.
What is the fee?
So, Mayor Protim, Pew?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I want to make a recommendation that be turned over to the city manager, him to make a decision and bring it back to us.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I actually recommend approval, and what we've calculated is permit fees at $88,205 and plan review fees at $22,051.25, for a total of $110,256.25. And, you know, if it's your desire to approve it, we'll need a, you'll need a motion to approve, but I would say I wouldn't necessarily ask that you do the specific amounting, in the event it goes down or up by a dollar or two.
I'm second motion.
Motion and a second to approve waiver of the fees to the motion. Counselor Crabbe, you have a comment to the motion?
I was just going to make that motion.
Okay. Counselor Woodson, do you have a comment to the motion?
Yes.
Okay.
City manager, based on what you just said, do you, you don't want us to give a specific dollar amount to let you have that flexibility, correct?
Yeah.
Because it could go lower or it could go higher?
Yeah, and that is in response to the Mayor Protim. We know it today that it's $110,256.25, but...
So, is that in your motion, Mayor Protim? That'll be to the description of the city manager?
The handle.
Okay, perfect. Then he can decide.
Okay.
And that goes, that's going to be another great partnership, you know, that the city is doing to enhance our community, to showcase our community, and improve our community. So...
All right. There is a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion to that motion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? They're waived.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for what you're doing. All right. Next is Ms. Bobby Starr to give an update on recent developments in the fight against domestic minor sex trafficking.
I don't see her here either.
Okay, we'll move on. Ms. Teresa Alamein?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. And Lindsey, you are awesome. Here's my 22 copies. Do you feel like looking at it? Thank you. I really appreciate it and so happy for you. That should be enough copies for everyone.
Welcome, ma'am.
Yes, I would appreciate it if everyone would take one. That is the program booklet. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Teresa Alamein, and I live at 3911 Steemil Road. And I'm here to follow up on the Georgia Apple Seed complaint, but I just want you to have our celebration booklet. And I do want to thank so many of you who have donated to the Southern Anti-Racism Network. And I would just say that on Saturday, the wonderful, beautiful proclamation that Mayor Henderson provided for Southern Anti-Racism Network Day in Columbus was June 29. And on June 29, we asked our council member, John House, to come to Atlanta to the Crown Plaza, Atlanta Airport Hotel, and he read that proclamation. Everybody was so excited. But since we had it early, the proclamation is actually in the booklet. And what that booklet represents is a grassroots fundraising that the Southern Anti-Racism Network does. A full-page ad is $200, a half-page ad is $100, and a quarter-page ad is 50. Ms. Woodson, we took a liberty of adding your ad back again, because we did have ads from Mr. Huff and Ms. Woodson from previously, so we added it back. And Mr. House did come with his check, pay for his ad in advance, and we thank you for that. But in the subject matter at hand, Georgia Apple Seed took a lot of money out of Columbus. I made some recommendations in February about that, in terms of the process in the department. And I understand from getting the records, Mr. Henderson, Mr. Mayor, that you are the supervisor to Seth Brown.
Yes, ma'am.
You're the only supervisor, because the money is seen as the mayor's money. It is the tax dollars that every man, woman, and child pays in this community. And it was given to lawyers, Mr. City Attorney, lawyers based in Atlanta, who came in here, took the money, and when they felt like quitting, they left. I've spoken to Teddy Reese about it, and we agreed to have lunch, to talk, because when they hired Teddy Reese, he immediately got on commissions and boards under Mayor Tomlinson. He felt so strong at one point, Mr. Mayor. He actually ran against you for your council seat. I know what it means to have the appearance of impropriety. I do know that. I said it was incestuous, unethical, and a patronage scheme. I said that. I've already gotten the letter, the email saying that the Crime Prevention Department will give Spice $20,000 of the $45,000 that we requested. And yes, this time, we will take it. We will take it. But you can rest assured, this will be the only time that the Southern Anti-Racism Network will ask the Columbus Consolidated Government for any money. It was meant to be a seed grant. This community can cover it. I don't believe in nonprofits doing what they're doing with the crime prevention. And I'll just read this quick letter to you. It's dated June 19 to a representative at Southern Anti-Racism Network. "I'm pleased to attach a grant to Southern Anti-Racism Network from Vanguard Charitable. This is how I raise money, recognizing who recommended the grant. I know the woman who did it, but they don't want me to mention her name. She called me up and said, 'Instead of the $300, I'm giving you $500, but I'm giving it to you through the Vanguard.'" So, when I saw the envelope, I knew it was from her. This is what a real grant is, and they tell you what you can do with it. Lord, I'm going to copy this and give it to Seth Brown, because one thing I know about Seth Brown is he does not lie. Anything you ask Seth, he will tell you the truth about, which is why I know what goes on in crime prevention. You have my recommendations for what to do, and I do need that three minutes to come back later.
You may, ma'am. It will, we'll come back to you right after the clerk's agenda.
Oh, okay. Did anybody have any questions?
It doesn't appear so far, ma'am. They may when you finish, though.
All right.
Thank you. If you want to have a seat, we'll call you back up just as quick as we can.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. City Manager, I think we're going to move a presentation up.
Yes, sir.
On your...
And thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to ask Deputy City Manager Pam Hoss to come to the podium. We have a guest here from the state of Georgia, and I will ask her to introduce him and let you know what he's going to be talking to us about today.
Sure. Good morning, mayor and council. We are fortunate to have Mr. Marvin Woodward here. He is with the State of Georgia GSFIC, which is the Georgia State Investment and Finance Commission. He is the Deputy Executive Director, which is responsible for all the construction of state property within the state of Georgia. We had a conference call with him several weeks ago and thought it was important that he share some of this information with council and the public. The state of Georgia is in the process of building a new Supreme and appellate court in the city of Atlanta, and the process that they have gone through in order to get this building constructed, it's in the final phases of construction. We thought that was really important with the discussions that we've been having with the government center. And so, I'll ask Mr. Woodward to come forward, walk through this presentation, and happy to answer any of your questions, but really happy that he was willing to come down and talk to you about this subject. So, Mr. Woodward?
Mr. Woodward, welcome, and thank you for your patience. We've gone a little long today, but thank you so much for being here. And this is a response to a request just to share what they do at the state level. It's not, it's not in any way, I don't think, a recommendation for Mr. Woodward. It's just him complying with our request, kind of educate us a little bit.
Right, okay.
Well, good morning. Thanks for having me.
My name is Marvin Woodward. I am, I do work for the state, and I am here to help.
[laughing]
We are in the process of building a new judicial center that will be named after Governor, or former Governor Nathan Deal. And so I want to talk to you a little bit about our process, and I am going to make some recommendations to you.
Well, good.
And based on some of the experiences that we've had with this, with this project. The location is where the old Archives Building was, if you're familiar with that, in Atlanta, near, near the state Capitol, between the state Capitol and Old Turner Stadium. It's on the site of the former Archives Building, looked like a cube, if you remember, remember that building. It's about a six-acre site. The red dot represents where that location was, or is. We were going to have some underground parking and some surface parking behind the building, but the challenge is it's right next to two major interstates. So that was the old Archives Building. This is the first opportunity in my career that I had a chance to blow up a building.
[laughing]
So we blew it up early one, one Sunday morning, when traffic was light. Fortunately, everything went okay. The last little piece of fire there is just to show that all the detonation took place. It's more for effect than anything else, but it did make for good effect. This may be the most important slide that I show you. We utilize three different project delivery methods, and I'll start at the bottom. The one on the bottom is called Design Bid Build. That's where, it's what most of this country was built with. You hire a design team, they develop a full set of plans and specs. You put those plans and specs out to bid, you receive a bid from the contractor, the low bid gets the project as long as they're qualified. The middle delivery method is Construction Manager at Risk. That's what we're using on our current judicial project, and that's the recommendation I would make to you. And so during that process, you hire a design team, and then literally right after that, you hire a construction team. And you hire them based on, both of them based on their qualifications. So you don't hire them based on price, or at least that would be my recommendation. You negotiate a price with them. But the advantage of that is that the construction team is involved in the design process, so they're going to comment on materials, they're going to comment on maybe some, some opportunities to save money. And so it's a very collaborative process, but you do have two separate contracts, one with a design team, one with a construction team. And then the construction team is going to give you estimates on your construction costs along the way as the project plans develop. So that way, you know you're in budget. So if they come back with a cost that's too high, then you go back to the drawing board, and you maybe have to remove some scope for the project. The top one is Design Bid Build, or Design, excuse me, Design Build, and that's where you would have one contract, and you would hire the design team and the construction team under that one contract. That is the fastest way to deliver a project, but realize that you only have one contract. So you, at that point, you're not going to have a contract with the design team. It's going to be the combined team, and I think as an owner, you lose a little bit of control with that. But the advantage of Design Build and then CM at Risk is you can actually start construction before the plans are fully developed. So that's why it's faster than the traditional Design Bid Build method, so. This was our timeline. Something else that I want to emphasize is, we broke our design process up into two separate phases. So initially, we hired a design team along with a judicial planning firm that just focuses on court planning. And I can't emphasize enough how valuable that is, and I would, again, encourage you to do that. You could make that one contract, so you hire a designer as part of that, they, they hire a judicial planning team, and you take that all the way through design. We broke that up into two parts because we didn't have the money for the project yet. So we wanted to present to the governor and the General Assembly, hey, what this project's going to cost. But the judicial planning team really looked out fifty years as to how this court building would function, what are the needs currently, but what are the needs going to be over the next twenty-five or fifty years? And that proved to be, proved to be very valuable. Our project also got put on hold due to politics during the middle process because the Governor Deal wanted to add two more Supreme Court justices, and the Supreme Court didn't want any more. So we went on hold for a while until they, they worked that out. But the project is about seventy-five percent complete. We hope to be done by, by the end of the year. Our design and construction team included Justice Planning Associates, so that's the firm that I was talking about that proved to be valuable. They're based out of Columbia, South Carolina. And then our design team was a joint venture between Robert Sterns, which actually is in New York City, and then Stevens and Wilkinson's, a local design firm in Atlanta. So Sterns did the conceptual work, and as the product, the design progressed, then Stevenson and Wilkinson kind of took over and finished up the design, and then we had a landscape architect firm as well. And then our construction team was Gilbane Building Company. They are based out of Providence, Rhode Island, but they've had an office in Atlanta for, for over twenty years. Our all-in budget right now is just shy of one hundred and thirty-two million dollars, so pretty significant project. So that includes design work, demolition, construction, furniture, and all the inspections that go with that. That equates to about five hundred and ninety dollars a square foot for a building, which is a little bit on the high side, but it is, it is a court building that is going to last probably seventy-five, a hundred years, and could argue is the second most important building in the state of Georgia. So that's one of the concepts that we, we looked at. It's the one that we finally, finally decided to stick with. Once we said, hey, that's the building look we kind of want, we wanted to make sure that the stacking work. So that's where this facility, court planning team can come in, is they can really help you get your building organized, how it's going to function, how it's going to flow, and make sure it fits on your site and fits on, fits within your, your project design. I'm just going to kind of speed up the pace here. We also used physical models of buildings to make, to make sure we were happy with the I went out on my screen. You guys still see that?
Yes.
All right.
Touch it.
Touch, touch the screen? All right, thank you. We also did a physical mock-up of one of the courtrooms in the Georgia World Congress Center during a time where, where they weren't busy. So that proved to be very valuable, too, because the judges got to sit at the bench, and we made some, some changes to heights and distances based on that project, or that, yeah, that project and that process. We also used some virtual models and animation that I'm going to talk about a little more in a few minutes. So again, that's our, our final concept and design, so if you drive through Atlanta, you'll start to see, you will, you will see that building, and it, it's starting to take shape. We have seven levels, so I'm not going to go through every level of the building for you. Our main entrance will be on the first floor with secured entrance for, for our visitors. Our judges have separate entrances that are secured, that only they can access with badges. So we, we put a lot of thought into security, both from entering the building and also from a blast perspective, some van parking near, near the site. The appellate court is the blue area, it's on the third floor. And then the Supreme Court is located up at the top on the, on the sixth, on the sixth A process that we use that, again, I would highly recommend is called three, three D or Building Information Modeling. The design, I would, I would make sure your design professional has the capabilities of doing that. The advantage is, is you can identify clash detections in the design during that process, and they can also do some animation, like some key spaces or some virtual reality, so that you can experience the building before it gets, it gets built. So I want to show you an example of that. So this is our atrium. So the atrium is nowhere close to being completed like this, but you can see through this animation, you can get a good feel for what the atrium and what the interior of that building is, is going to look like. This is the appellate courtroom. So again, the judges saw this, they got to make comments on it, and we've made adjustments because of this process and doing a, a physical mock-up. Here's the Supreme Court room. So I think you can see how valuable having this capability is because with all this millwork, you don't, you don't want to make a mistake. You want to get it right the first time. You don't want to have any change orders or rework. And then this is a typical judge's, judge's chamber. Probably had more discussion about the judges' chambers than we did the courtroom.
Sure.
Nobody's surprised by that, no. So just some, you know, notes of interest, two-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand square feet, seven floors. Atrium would be a hundred, a hundred-and-twelve feet, feet high, so. I went through that really fast, but I'd rather, I guess in summary, and I'd be glad to take some questions. Again, I want to emphasize that you hire a, a judicial facility planning firm that's part of the design team. You could do that separate, or you can, can do that all under one contract with your design. And I would also recommend that you use the CM at Risk delivery process because it's the most collaborative, and it also gives you feedback along the way that you're, you're on budget. And that, that is so critical because the traditional Design Bid Build method, you don't know you're on budget until the day you open bids. You know, designer will give you estimates, but you really don't know. So under the CM at Risk process, we, we give the team a budget, and they can't exceed it. So you, you don't go over budget. And then the last thing is I would encourage you to use the Building Information Modeling, the three-D design process, design and animation process, so you can experience the building before it's built. So I'll pause now and be glad to take any questions.
Counselor Allen.
Thank you, Mayor. Could you talk about three things? Courtrooms, how many courtrooms, how many judges, and then security and parking?
Okay. We only have two courtrooms. Supreme Court and appellate court. The Supreme Court is now comprised of nine judges. It was previously seven. That's why we had to pause for a while. The appellate court, they hear cases in groups of three judges, but there's only one case at a time, so there was only need for one courtroom, but there's fifteen appellate court judges right now. They, that court increases as the population of Georgia increases. So we just had a recent increase of three judges, so we had to accommodate them during this process. Also, as part of our building, we have built future shell space, so space that we're not going to build out right now, but it's available as that court expands. What was your last question?
Parking and security.
Okay, we've got about forty spaces under the building for the judges, so they'll have secure access that only they can get into, separate elevators that only they have access to, and we have about a hundred-and-eighty-five spaces, surface parking for clerks and staff around the, the back of the building, secured fence. The front of the building will have, you know, your typical security where you're going to have to go, you know, through a detector, you know, empty, empty your pockets and purses out and, and that sort of thing. Answer your question.
Yes, you did. I'm assuming the security manpower is state, or state employees?
It, it'll be state, state patrol will actually man that building for us. Yep.
All right. Thanks, sir.
Yep.
All right. Any, any other questions?
Did you answer this question about, you did parking, and you said, you mentioned elevators?
Yeah, we have, we have forty spaces underneath the building.
How many elevators you have?
Ew, I don't know that off the top. I know we've got two separate bays, I'm going to guess four.
Okay.
I should know that, but I don't. I think four.
Okay.
One of those will be dedicated only for the judges. Nobody else will have access, or you, you'll have to badge, you have to badge them to get to that elevator.
So, Mr. Mayor, we need to take advantage of, of this opportunity. We just, when I, we talked to him on a conference call, and because of his background with the state and what he's doing with the Supreme Appellate Court, we just knew that we had to bring them here and that you hear them, and I'm sure the chief judge and other judges will watch this component because they want to see what's going on with this Supreme Appellate Court, because they are obviously looking for a new courthouse. And, but where we are, I think, I've got the Deputy City Manager coming shortly with a, a timeline for addressing some of the things we need to be talking about, whether we are going to go for special purpose local option sales tax, and we don't know at this point whether there's going to be construction of a new facility. We, but, but we wanted to talk about process. We were so impressed with the, obviously the CM at Risk process, that I'd like to talk to you at the next meeting about adopting a process in the event you pull the trigger on moving forward with Splice and with constructing a new administrative building or new courthouse, at least we have a process in mind that we can start fine-tuning and putting together. And then at the next meeting, we would want to talk to you about the four options that we presented to you and to the public, and we want to see if we can narrow those options down and get some direction from you in terms of option. And if we can get a process down, and let's say that CM at Risk, which is what we are going to propose or recommend to you at the next meeting, and then we want to discuss options, and hopefully we can get down to an option or options that you can agree that we will pursue. And, and then from there, we will await your direction as far as moving forward with a special purpose local option sales tax, and if successful, how all of that will, will work. So we will be coming back to you at the very next meeting, the fourth Tuesday.
Okay, we, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I would, I would also recommend, if you don't have staff that's managed the CM at Risk process before, you probably need to reach out and hire supplemental staff to help you do that, because it, it would, it would be beneficial. It will save you money in the long run.
Yeah.
Counselor Thomas, had a question?
That was one of the things that, that I wanted to ask you about, Mr. Woodward. We've talked just very briefly about having a project manager that is a answerable to the city, and it may be a contract employee, not necessarily a new position. And can you expand on that just, just a bit? Did you have such a position, or what, do you typically not do that, or?
We, the, the agency that I work for, just, we, we are that. So we're the state's in-house owner representative. So we currently manage thirty-five construction projects, and so we, we serve in that capacity, so we do not have to outsource, outsource that. But, but we do a lot of these every year, so we're, we're skilled at it. But I highly recommend you either hire a firm or a contract individual that would be your owner's representative and that would, would... be your owner's representative, and that would, would serve, serve you and, and make the best decisions for the city of Columbus.
We have some people on our staff who are very capable and very, of, of doing this kind of thing, but they currently have a full-time job. Some of them more than a full-time job. And to add a daily presence, if you will, at the construction site when we are doing this multimillion dollar project, whatever it turns out to be, I think is a very important thing for us to consider.
It, it is a full-time job for somebody to manage the process.
Good. Thank you. And in the, in the building that you have there, you said you have two courtrooms. I'm assuming the rest of that is administrative support personnel and that kind of stuff?
It's all administrative support. And one thing we did not have to wrestle, wrestle with, or, you know, would be, you know, prisoners on trial, because that's not what, that's not the cases they hear. So that's a whole nother factor that, that plays into what you would have to do, and that's why that, the firm that, that does court planning will help you think that through and, and, you know, corridors and how people enter and, and exit and things like. So that's another level of complexity that we don't have, that you will have to wrestle with.
And as I recall, the first date that you put up there when you started doing this was in 2010.
Yeah, we've been on a nine-
And we're now in 19, and you're expecting a December 2019?
We've been on a nine-year journey. You know, a good part of that was just establishing our budget. What's, how's, you know, what's the space? What site do we want to put it on? Are we confident in our estimate? Have we accounted for inflation? And don't forget that. You know, make sure they're not giving you current dollars, but the, the dollars in which the year which you'll build it. So, and, and then we had to go, you know, present that to the governor and general assembly, and it took a couple of years for them to decide that they wanted to fund a building, you know, for that amount of money.
I hope we don't take nine years.
Hopefully don't even.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Woodward.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, our construction time has been 25 months, so once we started, it went, it went, it's gone well. And it just took us a while to get all the, everything aligned.
In your presence here today and kind of walking us through what the state has done and the process y'all use, actually will help shorten our time, because one of the things we've wrestled with and had a lot of discussion about is how the process should flow. How we ought to try to, you know, how, who we get involved, when we get them involved, and, and, and just trying to get that, that framework settled upon has been a challenge. So with that, having confidence in the fact that, that the state of Georgia uses this model and does it time and time again successfully, I think just having that kind of confidence for the council, for the public, I think that, that's going to help us get this thing moving a little quicker.
Well, we've used this same model to build buildings at Columbus Tech and Columbus State University, so it's, it's, you know, it's nothing new, but you do need somebody skilled in managing the process. And I'm here as a resource. If you guys want to come up and, and talk some more, if you want to tour the building, do a deeper dive into the process, I'm, I'm available and, and would be glad to help you.
We're grateful. We may take you up on that. Counselor Thomas, you had another comment?
Mr. City Manager, you were saying that in the next coming meeting, several things will happen. Am I correct? We have a, a work session this month, right? We have five, five Tuesdays and, do we have a work session?
July 30th, yes.
And maybe at that work session, some of the kinds of things that you were talking about, if they're available, I'm, I'm ready for us to make some decisions and move. So if we can do some of that, perhaps at the work sessions, have some of the discussions that council needs to have, I think it would be helpful.
So are you willing, I mean, I'd like to bring back, at least to go ahead and approve the process, the CM at Risk at the next meeting, if you're okay, if you're comfortable with that?
I think we bring it back, and then if there are any issues that surface that we need to investigate further, we, we take that time to do that. But I think we start it. I mean, we, we've, we've got a pretty good template. It's got a good track record.
Yes.
So I, I think it's something that we can bring up and, and talk about and make sure everybody gets to come to it.
Yeah, I, I just don't want us to lose that, that work session opportunity if we need to do some kinds of things at, at that time.
And you know, it, it would be interesting, that even if we have a recommendation for maybe the two options to whittle it down to, if we can get that done before the work session, because I think the value of the work session is council has an opportunity to kind of chew on it a little bit. And then when we meet at the work session, then we can, then counselors can formulate their, their concerns, their questions, and it may help us move a little quicker towards a, our ultimate.
And of course, as, as much information as you can get to us beforehand-
Sure.
-so we can take a look at it and read it and go through it would be helpful too, I think.
I think that starts by making an early recommendation and then gathering that information so that we know what you need, so that we can get it to you by the 30th.
Yeah. Well, I can tell you, when we were kind of directed to Mr. Woodward and had the conference call, I mean, it's a resource that, really, you've been a resource that we can't pay for. So, you know, I really want to thank you for-
You're welcome.
-your time and coming down to share with us. And then I, I think I heard you open the door to say that we can call on you and-
You, you, you have my number. And, and I want to tell, I've been in this role for 10 years, and we've probably done $4 billion worth of construction. We have not gone to court once on the CM at Risk process, because it's a collaborative process. I can't say that on the traditional design bid build. So you really, if, if you hire the right team, the process will go well.
Well, thank you, sir.
Can't thank you enough. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that concludes that update. I, I do, I'm tempted to, well, we'll come back to the timeline.
Let me go through your agenda, and then we should be at the updates by the time next.
Sure. Okay. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I've got a few things on my agenda. The public defender contract is something we bring to you every year around this time. And it's for the Office of the Chattahoochee Judicial Circuit in Muskogee County for indigent defense services.
Motion second to approve. Any discussion? All right, Mike, if you would, counselors, please enter your votes. That passes.
And, Mr. Mayor, I've got submission due date for component unit external audit reports. And this was actually at the recommendation of our external auditors, Malden and Jenkins LLC, in an effort to remain in compliance with all reporting requirements, establishing an annual due date of November 30th for those component units, so that we can meet our timeline, so that we can comply. And we've had some problems in the past years where, you know, we've got to call up until the last minute to get Christmas time and, but we need to set a hard timeline for them to respond with external audits.
All right. There's a motion for approval and a second. Any further discussion? Counselor, hang on. We, we had a, I think, some discussion. Bruce, if you'd put my, there we go. Counselor Thomas?
I just want to make sure that I understand the component units are some of those that we, like, I know, I know if, if you get hotel motel tax, you're supposed to make a-
That's right.
-financial, is that what we're talking about, Mr. Mayor?
That's one component unit. We've got the Muskogee-
Hospital.
Hospital Authority and, and Water Works, a number of component units that, that need to respond to us, so that we can package and, why don't you come around, Finance Director, and, and tell her what the problem is or the concern?
Good morning. Still morning?
Yes.
Okay. So we, as City Manager mentioned, we do have several component units that report to us, and their financial information is included in our comprehensive annual financial report, also referred to as our CAFR. The CCVB, the Columbus Convention and Visitors Bureau, their financial information is included, as well as the Water Works, the Hospital Authority of Columbus, Georgia-
Trade Center.
-of the Trade Center. Some of the internal departments, such as the Trade Center, of course, we do have their financial information, because I report to you that information every month. I'll report to you that information today. But, so for the external component units in which we are not tied, married together as far as our financial systems are concerned, we do rely on them to report their financial information to us. And as the City Manager mentioned, we have had some issues in the past with us receiving that information really at the midnight hour. We have 180 days to report to the, all the appropriate agencies, our financials for that prior fiscal year, and that is to ensure that we are in compliance with all outstanding debt obligations. We are required as part of our bond issuances to report this information. And, you know, as the City Manager mentioned, you know, just this past year, you know, I was at the mayor, then Mayor Thompson's house on Christmas Eve, because there was a document that I needed signed so that I could post by Christmas Day. So I just would like to avoid that.
Me too.
So I think, and it was at the recommendation of our external auditors for the first time, they did help us prepare our CAFR last year. And so they were waiting on me, you know, to give them the information, so they could finalize the CAFR and give it back to me, and then I have to disperse it back out to all the component units, because we all have to post the information online, so.
And I'm assuming that this will be, this deadline will be communicated to all of those units. I know when Mr. Easternbrook became the executive director at River Center, he said he discovered, after he had been there some time, that he was supposed to be making this financial report to the city, and they didn't realize they were supposed to do that and have ever since then. So this, this will also, this deadline will be communicated to all of those component units, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Okay. We have a motion and a second, and Bruce, you may queue it now. Counselors, you can enter your votes, please. That's approved.
Mr. Mayor, I've got some purchases, annual ambulance service license fees for fire EMS. This is annual, it's $17,900. We're asking your approval.
Motion is second to approve the, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, someone didn't vote on number 10 there, or the previous vote.
To what now?
There's someone, okay.
Okay. Are they all covered? All right? We're good? Okay. Make sure they're all registered. The, there is a motion and a second by the Mayor Pro Tem to approve the ambulance license fees for fire EMS. Any discussion on number A, the letter A? All right, all those in favor? Bruce, you can queue it. All those in favor, please enter your votes and oppose likewise. Passes.
And next, Mr. Mayor, I've got benches and receptacles for the historic district, and they are participating in the purchase of these benches and-
Motion and a second to approve B. Any discussion? All right. Please enter your votes. And that is, that passes.
And next, I've got BOSS Desk Software. It's $21,803. Will replace the outdated Lotus Notes-based IT central request database.
Motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? All right, please queue it up, Bruce. Enter your votes. That passes.
And, Mr. Mayor, the Columbus Police Department's requesting that we surplus three Crown VIX and donate them to the state of Georgia to be used as pit vehicles. We're asking your approval.
There's a motion and a second to approve D. Any discussion? Seeing none, Bruce, please queue it. Enter your votes. That's approved.
And, Mr. Mayor, some may be aware, they may have read it in the paper or saw it on the news, that we received a Smart Cities grant. Our IT director is going to tell you about that grant that we did receive. Dr. Forrest Toley.
I just want to introduce the main author and the project lead on this, and that's Scott Evans. He's going to come and explain the Smart Cities challenge.
Welcome, Scott.
Thank you.
Scott.
Forrest just keeps rolling out these bright young guys, can I tell you?
Good afternoon, members of council, Mr. City Manager, Mr. Mayor. My name is Scott Evans, like Forrest said. I'm the GIS Coordinator in Information Technology. I'm here to talk about the Georgia Smart Communities Grant Program. So in early spring 2019, my colleagues and I were tasked with constructing a grant proposal. This was really focused on preparing the city for smart technologies, and my colleagues include Forrest Toley, Jeremy Miles, and Shane Walker. During this proposal phase, next slide, one of the main requirements for the grant proposal phase was to have at least one Georgia Tech advisor. To date, we actually have three Georgia Tech advisors, including Dr. John E. Taylor, Dr. Neda Mohammedi, and Dr. Russell J. Clark. Additionally, we have reached out to Uptown Columbus and Muskogee County School District for their support, as we figured they would probably play an advisory role in the project. So fast forward to May 2019, that's when we actually submitted our grant, and then at the end of June, we received notification from Georgia Tech that we were one of, we were selected as a winner. So we're pretty proud of that. We're actually one of four other municipalities within the state, including City of Milton, City of Woodstock, and Macon, Bibb County, to actually win the grant for the 2019-2020 year. While the program does not officially begin until September, we're kind of in the pre-planning phases. But I should note that the actual grant program itself is actually for planning for something. So we're, we're very much in pre-planning, if you will. And like I mentioned, it starts in September, and we're hoping to learn a little bit more about the grant in early September, because we have a required workshop we need to attend. So they'll probably hammer out some finer details of what we need to do, how we need to get prepared, and so on and so forth. So what will this grant actually focus upon? Well, we're thinking that it will focus primarily on the deployment of IoT, Internet of Things devices in a specific area of the community. Really, we're anticipating that this project could potentially have two kind of impact areas, one being public safety and another being economic development. But again, like I mentioned before, because it's in a planning, it's, it's a planning grant project, it's kind of hard to say what, you know, what, what the results will be. I think we'll discover more of that as the project goes along. Now, while I, I mentioned planning and we don't know a lot, we do kind of have an area of interest, that being the Uptown area, roughly south of 14th Street, east of the Chattahoochee River, roughly west of Veterans Parkway and north of the historic district. But again, that's not set in stone by any means, just, just kind of an area we picked just because it's a focal point in the community. And we're, we're really kind of hoping to hammer that out in the next year with our Georgia Tech advisors. And really, the two things we want to determine are what data sets we would like to collect and what kind of infrastructure is needed, you know, if we have infrastructure already in place, or if there's additional, and what kind of devices will be needed to assist us in that task.
So, Scott, tell us how it will benefit public safety?
Well, it depends on, I would say it depends on the type of device. For instance, cameras, that may be a possibility in terms of, you know, if there's a crime happening, you have the camera footage to go back on. That may benefit for public safety.
So cameras in that defined boundary that you talked about in Uptown?
Correct. But like I said, I mean, we're not limited to just any specific devices at this point. It's kind of up in the air, and we're kind of relying on the Georgia Tech advisors to steer us in the right direction, if you will.
So how is it going to help with economic data?
Well, depending on the type of device, you may, you may have something that could track flow in and out of the area.
So how many people are coming? So how many people are coming and going in a particular area?
Correct. Something like that. That's at least what we're thinking at this point.
Okay. And so, and, uh, so for the public benefit beyond those things, will it, um, uh, will, will they be able to go wireless when they're in that defined boundary?
That's one thing we're looking at.
Okay.
It's public Wi-Fi perhaps.
So public Wi-Fi. And how much is the grant?
It's fifty thousand with, what is the, what is the match on? Twenty-five thousand.
Okay. Fifty thousand dollar grant.
Fifty thousand from Georgia Tech.
And then twenty-five thousand dollar match.
Correct.
And so, um, wanted to share that information with you. And, um, also want you to get a look at some of the younger people working behind the scene to, they understand all this stuff and...
Yeah. Well, I, we've got several counselors that have questions, but I gotta tell you, I was just sitting here thinking, Scott, I have not been this excited and optimistic about something I understand so little of since I taught my wife into marriage. No, because this is the first step. This is getting the data collected. And then what we use it for and, and the different types of analytics that we can, whatever we can dream up, whether it's economic development, public safety, marriage longevity, whatever. It's, uh, it's good. Uh, Counselor Woodson.
Thank you, Scott. Very much appreciated. Um, I have a techie in my family too. And when he speaks to me, I'm like, huh? What did you just say? Break, break it down. I didn't understand that. But, um, thank you very much. I wanted to kind of fill in to get a little better feeling on what you're talking about.
Sure.
So the grant is to help us with technology to be able to implement things that will be very helpful to the city, both in public safety and economic development, correct?
Correct.
When you're saying that, like, what comes to my mind is like the Piggly Wiggly on South Lumpkin Road. I know when they were remodeling it, one of the technologies that they put in there, and I'm just playing to see, because that's the first thing that came to my mind.
Sure.
One of the technologies that they put in the businesses, it detects, you know, how many people come in. And that tells them how many registers they need to have open so that the lines aren't very long. So I'm thinking that that's kind of when you're saying economy development. I'm kind of thinking, I, I'm, I'm fishing here. Um, I'm thinking that's basically the same thing we would use if we're using the Uptown as our focus point, um, to bring people and conferences and stuff. That would tell us a manner to of, you know, how many people really are there, how many really go into the facilities, something that can help the merchants in the future know how to make their business work better. Um, that's how I look at that.
I'm gonna agree with that.
I don't know if I'm right, but I'm going that way.
Well, and it kind of brings up, and I forgot to mention it. So we're kind of focused on the Uptown area, but depending on how the project goes, it might be a catalyst for other areas of the community, you know?
And, and that's where I was gonna go back too, because we have a lot of areas that, um, feel unsafe. And I think that will be a great way also to make people feel better, to know that there is footage going on of what's going in. There's the plus and the, and the cons when you go in the neighborhood. Some people might feel, you are invading my privacy. But that's a decision and a perception that we will need to work with because if you're concerned with, with what's going in the community, I think it's okay for your privacy to be a little bit, um, disturbed because that's gonna tell you who's going in your neighborhood that doesn't need to be in your neighborhood. So I think it's a very good concept. Um, I think you picked the right place to start it off because we want people to feel safe coming to Uptown. Uptown is a project that we've been working for a long time. It's come a long way. Um, it's something that brings the visitors. It's something that the visitors come. So it's really great for them to feel, um, great. I think too, um, I don't know, is my brain just running in the techie world. I think too, in the process of that, something to consider, um, we need an, uh, it or a niche in Columbus, you know, like Chicago has, um, the big, big bean, you know, others have something else. I think with technology and that's moving into, I think something where someone can look at themselves like in a technology way in our Uptown or area. Do you, you know where I'm going?
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
Um, I think will be so cool. I think it will bring people to our community because they'll think, because I know we have an incubator, small business incubator. So I think that will also work where it could be a niche where someone can go and, and play with the technology and seeing themselves in another, um, time maybe. And they can do that while they're here. So just food for thought. But I wanted to make sure if I was going in the right direction with what you're saying with the project.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you. Um, can you give me some examples of the devices? You've mentioned a public Wi-Fi and cameras, but can, are there others that are...
Feel free to speak. I mean, we have, there's a variety of devices out there. Um, you mentioned cameras, Wi-Fi, um, there's people counters, tag readers. And some of this stuff started in, you know, um, is in use for public safety. But, um, but it's not just limited to that as well.
So, so the tag readers, when you mentioned that, you know, people that's, uh, visiting the Uptown area, if there are warrants out for them, um, that tag reader might pick up?
Theoretically.
Yeah, okay.
But it's something to consider within the first year. I mean, that's what the whole year's all about. The first year is to plan, to take into consideration all these, you know, possibilities, whether they be good or bad.
Thank you.
Counselor, I wanted to mention too, on all of the things, like, um, a, a tag reader also gives you uniqueness of individual and uniqueness of vehicle. And it could let you know, if you have a certain event, does it bring a certain part of town? If you have another event, like, um, what we have on Saturday's market day, so does that bring a different clientele? And when you have the, the people counters and unique identifiers, so we can say, hey, this is a different group that comes for each event, as opposed to maybe the same group comes for every event, then you can kind of pick up on some of your economic indicators that way. So we don't want people to think it's just for crime prevention and just for public safety. All the devices can be used, anything that uniquely identifies someone, but it doesn't know it's Forrest Toley, but it knows that it's, I'm different from this person. Then it says, okay, twelve different people came by here, and they were different, as opposed to me just walking my laps and it counts me twelve times. So all of the things can be used, both public safety and to get a little bit of an idea of the uniqueness of the individuals coming.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Thomas?
Uh, this is a planning grant, correct?
Correct.
So does this, does this include, uh, buying any of this hardware, or is this just planning that we could put this into place kind of thing?
At the moment, I don't know. We're hoping to learn that. More information at the workshop. Hopefully we'll, we'll get, we'll get an answer to that soon.
Okay. But, but it's a planning of how we're going, how we could use this throughout the city?
That is correct.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah. I mean, this is the way of the future, predictive analytics. And we can kind of predict. It, it helps you be more efficient with where we spend our money. It helps us identify the services that are still in high demand. It's just, I think, it's just, whatever you guys can dream of, which is a whole lot more than I can, it allows us to predict some things that are gonna help us serve the citizens more effectively, more efficiently. Great job, ma'am. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Forrest, thank you. Uh, Mr. Mayor, with that, um, we are going to ask Director Rick Jones to come and talk about shared electric scooters.
Good afternoon. Excuse me. Um, my primary reasoning for being here today and purpose is to talk about a very hot subject that I know is all on your minds about dealing with scooters. Um, believe it or not, if we don't have this conversation now, we're gonna regret it later on, I'm afraid, in terms of what scooters, uh, the impact that scooters could have on our community. And we want to kind of walk you through that just briefly. This is kind of a, also a, a two-part presentation. Reason I'm, mainly the reason I'm here is because of the fact that Uptown has requested the op, the option of looking at putting scooper, scooters into the Uptown area itself. But basically, right now, on a trial basis, uh, to come in and see if they will actually work over a ninety day period. Are they, is it a doable thing for the community as a whole? Uh, I say it's a two-part presentation because, uh, I'm gonna ask that Ross Hunter come behind me and explain what they're, why they're trying to achieve this and how we go about doing that. But we want to talk to you directly about, about shared electric, uh, scooters in Columbus and what it means. Uh, these are, it's a, it's phenomenal. It's happening all over the country. Uh, you'll, you'll see it in the second presentation about where they are impacting other communities right now. A lot of folks like these scooters, uh, excuse, they love these scooters in the sense that it provides them a really a rider experience. They can ride wherever they want to go, from point A to point B, by actually hopping on a scooter, just a little app on their phone that ties them to the scooter itself. They pay a rate based off that app. They take the scooter and they go where they want to go, uh, throughout the community. Provides that first and last mile connection also, particularly if you're, say, you're riding the bus, you get off the bus, and you have to go another two blocks, three blocks. It provides that experience for folks to be able to do that in a timely manner. And what you're doing really, like I said, you're renting that, that scooter at one point, and then you're leaving it at another, so you're not responsible for that scooter after that point. And you pay for it, again, like I said, through the app itself. So that's, that makes it, you know, uh, convenient and operational as well. And it is convenient to use itself in terms of, again, you, you find these things pretty much, uh, at a corner, on a, on a block or a certain area where they've been set up. You pick one up, uh, you don't have to walk two miles to find one. They are relatively close by, say at a bus stop again, or some other point of transportation, that you could go pick one up. And then they, it does help in, in cities in terms of cases make mo, meet mobility needs and so forth, uh, giving, giving folks back and forth where they need to go to work or shop or whatever. Some communities have actually seen or promoted the idea that it does lessen traffic, uh, particularly dealing with, in roadways and so forth. And I know the Atlanta area has certainly promoted that idea of having folks instead of getting their car and going somewhere, we'd much rather see them ride a scooter. So that's why for the most part, people love these e-scooters. Now, by the same token, why people hate, uh, shared e-scooters. And I thought when I wrote this, hate was probably too strong a word. And then I got to reading the material about it and said, nope, that's accurate. People hate e-scooters in some cases, um, primarily because they will block sidewalks. As I say, you get them from one point and you take them to another, and folks will lay them down. Well, they may lay them down necessarily in a designated area, like they're supposed to. They may just leave in the middle of the sidewalk and walk away from them. Uh, there's an awful lot of entry potential here, uh, involved with that. Uh, you'll see that. You'll, you can, we can go and pull up any website for you, uh, in terms of where the ERS are, are reporting now, how many accidents they're having based on scooters. Unfortunately, uh, there was a young man that was, that was killed in the Atlanta area, uh, one night, uh, coming out of a, lady was coming out of the parking garage and she ran over him, didn't see him apparently. Uh, so there is that potential. People fall off these things as well. Uh, and there's some liability involved with that as well. Aesthetics in here, you can see in some of the pictures how the, the, the scooters are left. They're not very attractive, especially in, in any area, whether it be the Uptown area or any other part of the community. It's just not very attractive, uh, in overall appearance. The, uh, there are, again, there's some safety and injury concerns here as well. We stated earlier about the potential. And some neighborhoods, they're just a real nuisance to that neighborhood as well in terms of the activity goes on with them. Some neighborhoods just do not want you riding a scooter, uh, through their area. I mean, that's, that's just it. This, this one dramatic picture in here, I had to go back and make sure I, I was accurate. It wasn't just for fun, but there actually is a group out there, like I said, that hates e-scooters, and they, they have actually set some on fire. Just to give you an idea. So there's a good, there's a good balance, I think, in terms of what we're talking about here with this love-hate relationship, uh, about these e-scooters. Uh, and there's a gentleman here from, from Lime, the company, wants to come in and do the trial here today with us, who can, who can share some more information about what the scooters do and so forth. Well, it's actually an e-scooter itself, it's really an electric-powered, uh, kick scooter that is, is sized to accommodate at least most adults. Uh, this definition has up to at least two hundred and twenty pounds. Uh, they can travel on level ground for about fifteen miles per hour. Uh, that's pretty good speed. Uh, when you really think about that, that's, that's pretty good speed for anybody from, from that standpoint. There was legislation this past legislative session, House Board, House Bill, uh, four fifty-four was introduced. Uh, it would have prohibited parking scooters on sidewalks. This is statewide now. Uh, it allowed removal of dangerous, uh, removal of devices parked in a dangerous manner. It would allow riding on bike paths, bike lanes and roads with a speed limit less than thirty-five miles an hour. It would require drivers to yield to riders in the bike lane itself. Uh, and unfortunately, or fortunately, however you want to look at it, sections of the bill regulating scooters failed, uh, to come out of, it passed the House but did not pass the Senate this last time around. House Bill four fifty-four, remainder of that, which built really with electric bicycles, did pass and governs that really, you know, in terms of how you use those devices on, on pathways and trails and so forth. Uh, but did not, does not address scooters at this time. As I said, this is a hot-button topic because there are communities right now that have actually banned or in the process of banning e-scooters. There's just not two or three of them. Uh, there's quite a few on this list here, from Alpharetta to Marietta to Savannah. They have all pretty much banned these kind of devices going forward, uh, in the community. Um, Athens-Clark County is an interesting one because of, uh, they got a twelve-month ban on it now because you would think with the student population, that they could, they would be willing to share that more and encourage that kind of use. But, and they may, may have still allow them on campus, but outside the campus itself, uh, the city has basically banned them for at least twelve months involved with that. By the same token, there are those who have actually either approved, uh, these e-scooters or are in the, in the process of considering. Of course, Atlanta being the, being the biggest one on that list itself, um, it has, it has set up rules, it has set up the amount of actual scooters that can be within the community itself. Uh, they can tell, talk about where they've been placed, and they need to provide for fines if these things are not, uh, if the ordinance is not followed. Uh, there are, again, Roswell's on here. They were actually looking at trying to monitor e-scooters and whatnot. Uh, Duluth on here has no immediate plans. Uh, but at least, uh, what I'm saying to you, these communities have had the conversation. And that's what we're trying to stimulate here, is the conversation about where we, where do we want to go with, with e-scooters, if we want to go at all. The proposal you're gonna have, you know, hear about is really that this is a trial proposal. Right now, we really don't have anything that actually governs these, these vehicles in, in the community. Uh, there's nothing there. Uh, to our surprise, uh, when we started doing a little more research locally, we discovered that, uh, you could actually ride a two-wheel vehicle this type now on the Riverwalk or on the Follow Me Trail or the, uh, Fall Line Trace. So those, they are, they are allowed now by ordinance. If you're a two, two-wheel vehicle battery-operated, uh, you can ride them today. We have proposed internally, looking at doing a draft ordinance for this that would actually govern this. Should we get an indication from council, we need to go forward in that direction. We'll be prepared to, to, uh, try to address that. But Uptown in Columbus itself is, is, came to us really and said, we'd like to have, at least have a trial period on this to see if these things really do work over a next, over a next ninety-year, ninety-day process, really. It would require an MOE between us and the, the company called Lime. Uh, would, like I said, be a ninety-day trial period. Uh, it would limit the maximum number of the devices to, to three hundred, so we wouldn't be inundated with, uh, more than we really flat could handle right now. Uh, it would require Lime to carry liability insurance. Uh, the, the scooters themselves under the proposal would allow them only in the streets and on bike paths within designated areas. And then the, uh, mobility devices are to be parked on sidewalks with three feet of clearance for pedestrians. So they have to be, they can't be just scattered all over the place from that. That's what the proposal calls for right now, involved with that. The one thing it also talks about though is what area are we looking at actually making this, this trial period try to work? Staff on the left-hand side had proposed what really looks like the Uptown area itself, which runs from about Ninth up to Fourteenth, second over, over to the Riverwalk, in terms of that. Uh, Uptown in, in response has really come back and said, we really need something more in the way of a mile, mile and a half because we don't think you're gonna collect enough data that's gonna be a, really to support and show what the, the process really is here when it's all said and done. Um, those are the two boundary proposals right now. Uh, we're, primarily from the planning department's status, we were, we were concerned about how some of these things are going, going to some of the neighborhoods.
Yeah.
Particularly dealing with, uh, the historic district to the south of us here, uh, and probably... And probably this shows going into parts of Midtown as well. But if you want to try to capture that data as well, you may have to extend that boundary out to make that happen. So with that, I'll take any questions and I'll turn it over to Mr. Horner and ask him to come and make a brief presentation to you about what they're trying to achieve.
Counselor Allen?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of questions, Rick. Savannah, I noticed they banned all dockless electronic devices. Did they try the scooters?
I don't believe they did. Now, I, I'm a novice in that part of the, of the conversation, but I can find out for you if we don't know. But my understanding is they did not. They may have some trouble with them, undoubtedly, but I don't know that they had established a trial period.
Okay. And the other question is, you download an app and you provide your information and that way you can pick them up and then your, your card is debited for that amount, whatever that amount is.
Right.
So is there a tracking device, GPS and all that for that scooter?
I believe so. We need to let, let the gentleman from Lime come and explain that better to us.
I swear I thought you were going to say.
But there is, there is a way. I can pull, I have an app on my phone, I've never really got the chance to use it, but you can go there and just like you scan that, that QR code or, or whatever's on there and it basically logs, it logs you in and it, it'll keep up in terms of telling you what the cost is per mile to ride that thing or time-wise.
I was just thinking from a public safety standpoint, if, if there was a GPS tracking device, then you would know who's utilizing it and where they are and what they, if they were in an area when something happened, you know, you could track that down.
I think, I think I needed to link this back to Lime.
That'll be good information that he can provide because I think the public needs to know, and I didn't know if you were going to go into how the process works, how do you get the scooter and how do you pay for it, how do you drop it off? And, and basically it's wherever you, you drop it, they, through GPS, know where it's at and they retrieve it and, or someone else can pick it up at that location.
Right.
And rent it.
And we've had, they have them in the cities I've traveled in, particularly in Austin, Texas. So the GPS, somebody has tried to steal one, which was not too bright.
No, right.
You know, so the GPS knows where it is and, you know, police show up. So, but anyway, I was just curious, is that exactly, it sounds like an Uber-type app.
It is, it is the most part, yes.
But, but, but yeah, I think you should use that app and at least tell us about it.
Well, that's why I have an expert here to do that, sir. I know my limitations, trust me.
Is that all, Counselor? Ross?
Yes, it is.
Counselor, we've got a few more folks. Hang on just a second. Counselor Crabbe?
I have a suggestion that maybe we create the designated area to go between the two CSU campuses. So maybe along the bike trail between CSU, Midtown, and then the lower campus.
And I just want, I just want, I want to clarify one thing because I am here representing Uptown Columbus and, and we have not taken an official stance on this from Uptown Columbus. What we've taken a stance on is that alternate transportation is important for communities. These scooters, these e-scooters are very new and you're going to hear more from the Lime scooter rep. About a year ago, actually Pam Hodge, Deputy City Manager Pam Hodge and Julio Portillo and myself from Midtown went to the International Downtown Association Conference. There was a lot of discussion about e-scooters and we sat in on a couple of sessions and we found out that most communities did not have an ordinance prohibiting them. And that was a lot of the issues that most of these communities have had. You'll see up there in, in Georgia, many of these communities have banned them without even looking at them. And so our point was, from Uptown and, and myself personally, reaching out to the city was, if somebody came and just set these up in Uptown, we'd be dealing with them from our ambassadors to our clean team to a reactionary point from the city. So I wanted to look at it a little more proactively. And I didn't have an opinion and, and in fact, even when I called City Manager Hughley, he had a very negative, a very negative response and, and so did most of the, most of the people that we dealt with. So we, we felt like it was important for us to, to actually take a look at it. So, and I don't know how long ago, it's been months ago, we had NEMA, who's going to come up here, come and bring scooters. We've had, we had meetings with about 50 people from the community. We had representation from Bibb City, from Midtown, from Uptown. We had, we had, we had a very good cross-section and, and in that meeting, I think it was one of the best things that I've, I've heard since leaving the city was Isaiah saying, you know what, I think we need to at least check this out. And I think this, and this 90-day test model, I think is, is something that I was more excited about than, than even the scooters, because I think it is important for us in Uptown and other parts of the city to be able to use this idea of testing something, finding, getting the data and coming back and seeing, should this be regulated? Should it be banned? Should it be something that we embrace? Because something is coming after e-scooters and we need to be prepared. And that, that was our point and I just wanted to clarify that. And I'm not an expert, I've ridden them. I think that the TSUS employees would go further in Uptown, they would, they would use them. I think that the Riverwalk, the Dragonfly, I love the, the comment about the two campuses connecting through the scooters because this brings less cars to Uptown and it gives us an opportunity to, to move people around. And you'll hear, you'll hear the good from NEMA and, and so I just wanted to leave it at that for, for us. We do have ambassadors and we will be helping to monitor if we're able to get this 90-day test, so.
Okay. We've got a couple of other questions. Counselor Woodson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Rick, Ross, while I think the idea is very neat, I have some concerns. And my concern is going into the neighborhoods in the residential area. Historic District already feels like they're being impacted with so many different things. And when they bought their homes, they bought it because they wanted to have a, a community that felt safe and beautiful and, and keep the traditions of our, you know, of our city. I'm with them on this one. I, I think the scooter idea is perfect if you're using it, like in Uptown and the Riverwalk. Maybe if there's a straight shot going to the university and back, yes. But going into the neighborhoods and the community, I have a problem with it. I haven't received a lot of phone calls, but I'm pretty sure after this presentation, my, my phone and house will lit up because it seems like we're the ones that get it. So I'm already very concerned about that. I'm concerned about the scooters being in the pigment of the Historic District because of the bricks. I know it's supposed to go on sidewalk, but young people are going to think this is a new toy and a great toy and they're going to want to kind of explore in that area. So I'm not comfortable right now with it. I'm open for it, but I'm not comfortable, I need to be very honest about it because of those things. And I did know about the tracking because I've had traveled to other communities and seen them. I've seen in other communities where there's park areas, you know, in every, so many corners, there's a park area like a bike rack almost, and the people put them there. They don't just throw them, you know, anywhere they go. There are designated areas where you could pick a scooter up and, and drop a scooter off. So I have seen that. 300 sounds like a lot of scooters to me for a trial base. So this one, before you continue, I just want to let you know my discomfort. I like the concept because it's new, it's different and the younger generation, but I really wouldn't like to impose on neighborhoods. And I would like to make sure that the liability does not fall on the city, that somebody has an accident, they come back and say, especially in the Historic District, to say, oh, I was riding there and because of that brick or because of that I tripped. And it becomes a liability to the city. Again, I'm not against it, I'm just cautious, I don't want to see them in the neighborhoods.
All right. Counselor Thomas?
The thought that comes to my mind is, is pretty much the same thought that comes to my mind when we first started talking about Whitewater. I'll hold your car keys while you go down the river in the Whitewater, but I ain't going in the river. I'll help you rent a scooter, but I, I'm not riding a scooter. Rick and I'll sit out on one of the sidewalks and watch you go by. Speaking of one of the sidewalks, I'm, I assume, and maybe it's the wrong assumption, that these would not be allowed on the sidewalks. They would have to be in the street itself, particularly in the downtown area. We don't allow bicycles on the sidewalk. I'm assuming we wouldn't allow scooters.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
The other, the other thing that I wanted, two other things I want to ask. One is the legislation that you said had passed the House is still pending in the Senate and will come back. And as I understand that legislation, it only permits this to take place. It does not in any way require that if a company comes to you, you must allow them. Is that, is that a correct?
Yes, ma'am. It, it establishes certain standards like not being able to ride on sidewalk where you place the, the scooters and things of that nature. But, and I do anticipate it being, or being, coming back through the next legislative session.
And the, the last thing I, I will say is that every, it seems like everything I have read about the scooter issue has been that cities have banned the scooters because of some of the issues that, that you raised here. And of these cities that you have given us in the charts here, do you know, one, if any of these 14 that have banned the scooters, if this is a reversal of a policy? Did they allow them and then ban them?
I do not know. Again, again, this is something of a, a relatively new thing that's happening here with the scooters coming into play in communities as a whole. I don't know that, like Ross has alluded to, I don't know that a lot of these communities have, you know, had, had, had an ordinance in place to govern them, to begin with, much like us.
Well, and Counselor, I'm going to ask, because I'd like to know that too, did they, did they have scooters and then banned it? And so we're going to do some more research and get you that information.
In, in some of the articles that I've read, that has been the, the project, the, the pathway, that they had them, they had a, an incident or several instances and then banned them. So any, anything you can get on that. The other one was on the cities that have considered, is Atlanta, are Atlanta and Brookhaven the only two on that list that have allowed that? The Decatur says they're in the process of drafting. Duluth says no immediate plans. Lawrenceville says has concerns. Roswell says, you know, to monitor. So are there cities actually in Georgia, particularly cities our size, that have allowed the scooters?
I do not know. Our research has not, has not shown anything, but the gentleman from Lime may, may have more information than I do about that, but our research has not shown anything that indicates that.
And I think our guest has that information, but I think this is a good follow-up for the work session too.
Yeah.
With some of the, the information you've asked for.
And I, I do think that there's a difference, in my mind at least, in allowing the scooters on the, the bike trails and allowing them downtown and in neighborhoods. Knowing some of the folks that I get regular communication from in the Historic District, I can just hardly believe that they would like to have this in their neighborhood. And as you go further out from there, you know, I mean, one of the map showed that one of the proposed or suggested areas is to Winon Road, where Winon Road and Buena Vista Road intersect down here. Please don't put, let scooters be in that area unless you also have Strifler-Hemby and McMullen there ready to pick people up. I mean, I, I just think it's a, it's, it's, there's some areas that the traffic would not in any way allow safety. And while I did ask the city attorney about our, the city's liability and he said, we have the immunity, but if, if someone were to file a suit, we'd still have to go through the, the legalities of getting it dismissed or whatever we had to do. So I'm, I'm very concerned about it and I, I do think that we need to have a lot more discussion before we approve this sort of thing.
And Mr. Mayor and members of council, I think this is a great lead-in now to, to let the gentleman from Lime come and give you as part of the, of the conversation because he can probably answer many of the questions you may already have today.
Absolutely. We want to hear from him, but we've got one more Counselor, I think it was in queue. Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you. For several years now, I'm going to play a little bit of a devil advocate here. For several years now, we've spent a lot of time, a lot of our resources, building these bike trails and trying to convert our city into a walking, biking type of community. And so it seems like we've kind of set ourselves up for at least a trial of, of this magnitude. I think if we don't at least allow for the 90-day trial, we need, we need the 90-day trial to either prove ourselves right or wrong. We, we want to be inclusive of the younger citizens and I think that they would be right in saying that we're kind of talking the talk but not walking the walk. The 90-day trial is going to prove us right or wrong, if we like it or if we don't, if there's, without it, I just, I just don't see us not allowing the 90-day trial, so.
Okay.
Hello, thank you for having me. My name is Nima Devari. I am the Community Affairs Manager for Lime for the state of Georgia. I want to be super clear that this is all just preliminary discussions. Columbus was not on the 2019-2020 roadmap for Lime. I think I read an article about Ross talking about maybe let's bring scooters to Columbus, so I reached out to him, we started talking. But I'm falling on my sword for Columbus, but HQ is not necessarily like looking at Columbus in that way. So we want to try to get this sort of 90-day proposal to a place, the map to a place where our operations team says it does make business sense to come to Columbus. Do I just tap to go to the next slide?
Can you get closer to the mic?
Sure. Great. As was discussed, I'll try to burn through this really quickly because I know we've all been here a long time. But so we really focus on first mile, last mile, connecting to public transit stations. To that end, in Mexico City, 64.3% of our rides stop or start at a public transit station. I know there isn't a lot of mass transit here and that there's limited bus service, so that would be a great way to like sort of supplement the lack of service. This is our last-year timeline. We launched June 2017 in Greensboro, North Carolina with pedal bicycles. We then added electric bicycles and then scooters and we have a car share program in Seattle that we'll be expanding to other cities as well. In December of 2017, we were at 1 million rides globally. In 12 months, in the 12 months of 2018, we hit 26 million rides globally. We are now at 50 million rides globally. We are in 150 cities, 22 countries. Some of the stats I like, if you look on the right, is that women adopt scooters more quickly than bicycles. About 33% of riders are female versus 28% of cyclists. And that nationally in the United States, about 30, 27% of people identify as people of color, but 36% of scooter riders identify as people of color. This is where we operate in the United States. This is where we operate in Europe.
Could you go back?
Sure. This is where we operate in Europe. This is where I operate in Australia, New Zealand. We're also in South America, Latin America, and Asia. Where we operate in Georgia is Atlanta, Decatur, and Statesboro. In Atlanta, and I like these three because we have different models in each of them, Atlanta is an open permit market. Basically, every operator says, do not do that. We are working really hard to change what's going on in Atlanta, but Atlanta is one of five cities that has chosen to go a very messy five cities that has chosen to go a very messy route. The other ones are Nashville, San Diego, Los Angeles, and Austin. San Antonio also went that route of an open market and has just now converted to an RFP process, which is what we recommend for a long-term program. In Decatur, we are operating with an interim operating agreement. We have a contract with the city. We are the only provider in the city of Decatur, and they are using that time to study scooters to determine what the ordinance should look like. Brookhaven was on that chart earlier. Brookhaven enacted an ordinance. It doesn't make any sense for any operator, and no one's operating there. So, that's the things we want to see cities avoid. Why go through that rigmarole if it's not going to be a working system? And then in Statesboro, we operate with an exclusive agreement with the Georgia Southern University of Statesboro. We are just on campus, but the city has reached out to see if we are willing to expand to service the city as well. If you look in the column on the right, you can see we've had 1.1 million rides in Atlanta, about 342,000 unique riders. The first two stats I also really like, which is that 40% of Lime riders in Atlanta report using scooters to connect to or from work or school. These aren't people taking joy rides or leisure rides. These are people going about their day-to-day business. And that 37% of Lime riders in Atlanta said that the scooter displaced a car trip. When we asked them what their most recent destination was, how would they have gotten there? They would have used a Lyft, Uber, personal vehicle, or taxi if a scooter was not available. This is mode shift happening. My background, prior to joining Lime, I was the Director of Development for the Hawaii Bicycling League, which is the statewide advocacy organization for bicycles. I have been car-free for about 15 years. I really approach this industry as micro-mobility. I think Lime has the best hardware and the best operations plan, but I don't think we are the be-all, end-all, or that we should have a monopoly on this space. I believe getting people out of their cars for under three-mile trips is like the goal. This is an example of one of our scooters. It's not the scooter that we have in Atlanta, and I say "one of" because we have a vertically-integrated system. We design our scooters ourselves. We manufacture them ourselves. We maintain them ourselves. A lot of the competitors, you can buy that model of scooter off of Amazon right now. A personal-grade scooter is not made for a shared commercial usage. I brought one of the demo scooters down with me from Atlanta, so if anyone wants to check it out afterwards, I can show you some of the differences between our hardware and other companies' hardware. Also, our pricing, our pricing is $1 to unlock, 29 cents per minute to ride. Average ride is about 10 minutes, so about $3.90. If pricing is an issue for someone, we have a nationwide program called Lime Access. Anyone who accepts state or federal assistance, SNAP, Medicaid, Social Security, anything like that, all of their Lime rides are 50 cents to unlock and 7 cents per minute to ride, making the average ride $1.25 for the low-income user. Also, if someone is low-income and they don't have a smartphone, they can use SMS technology to unlock their phone. And if they are unbanked, they don't have a credit card, they can put cash onto their account by going to any of the 27,000 pay near me locations in the country, including every CVS and Family Dollar, and they can put cash directly onto their account. This is an example of one of our scooters. I can go over the hardware, but we can sort of do that downstairs if you want to see the way it works, like you were asking. Just like Uber or Lyft, you download the app, you set up your account, you use your phone to unlock the scooter, ride it to your final destination, park it properly, and then lock it again with your phone. The three bits of feedback I get most are vehicle parking, vehicle riding, and what we do with our data, if anything. When it comes to parking, we do mandatory onboarding when you first download the app. It is, if you look at the image on the left, you can see, keep the pedestrian right-of-way clear, park in the furniture zone, the three feet in from the curb, traditionally where you would see fire hydrants, park benches, things like that. Additionally, we are able to geofence areas. If you look at the image on the right, that red square, so if you geofence an area, what the technology does is that it prevents you from ending your ride. So, you could feasibly take your scooter to a geofenced area and leave it there, but you're going to be charged per minute as you leave your scooter there unless you take it out and lock it. So, that's how we distance and devise people from taking scooters into places they shouldn't take them. We have a game. You don't care about the game. We can talk about that later. Sidewalk riding. Sidewalk riding, we don't want sidewalk riding. We emphatically discourage sidewalk riding. It says directly on the scooter, "Do not ride on the sidewalk." But people do sometimes ride on the sidewalk. We found through all of our surveys, it's because they feel unsafe. It's because they're afraid of the cars are going to kill them if they don't have a bike path or a lane or somewhere to ride, so they ride on the sidewalk. Having worked in bicycle advocacy, I can tell you, you are more likely to get hit by a car on the sidewalk than you are on the street with cars pulling out of driveways and having limited visibility. But, you know, there's a cognitive dissonance there. People feel safe on the sidewalk. We just have to do education, including all these videos that we put out, including all the activations I do. I've done, I don't know, probably like 50 different in-person activations in Atlanta since January of this year, constantly getting out there, getting the messaging out there, doing helmet giveaways, and I brought some of the education that I can share with you all. When it comes to safety, we did a $3 million global Respect the Ride campaign. We gave away 250,000 helmets through that. We do all sorts of in-app safety messaging and real-world safety messaging. If you look at the image on the left, you can see the Sufa signs. I think there are 47 of them in Atlanta, but we did real-world advertising showing people, you know, "Respect the ride, wear a helmet, stay off sidewalks." If you look at the image on the right, when Atlanta finally adopted their ordinance in February of this year, we put a link directly to that ordinance. So, if you clicked that top-right image, it would take you to the City of Atlanta ordinance webpage. We also do generic in-app messaging. If you look at the image on the left, "Ride carefully, wear a helmet," et cetera. The image in the middle was when Super Bowl came to town, and the city designated specific parking areas and no parking areas. We're able to do that specific messaging about Super Bowl parking. I offer monthly safety classes in Decatur and in Atlanta. If you top-right, you can see the email messaging that we send out to our riders. I also do all sorts of press and media, whether it's podcasts, or op-eds, or interviews, to share this information. Data sharing. Since day one, we have shared all of our data freely with the college campuses in the cities in which we operate. We give the city a dashboard that they can log into to see the metrics that we share with them. Additionally, MDS, Mobility Data Specifications, is an open-source software developed with the Department of Los Angeles, or the Los Angeles Department of Transportation, and this is becoming the national, if not global, standard for data. So, I am not a data person. I'm not a tech person. I went to film school, then I went to law school, but I'm very passionate about what we do. So, the way our data scientist explained it to me is like data is like a library. When you go to the library, you don't want to check out every single book in there. You want specific books in there. So, MDS gives you all of the data of all of the scooters in your city, and then you use a service like Remix or Populous, which are like third-party providers, to sift through that data, be like, "We're really interested in stop-and-start information," or "Which roads are being used?" Or whatever information you're interested in. And then that organization that you contract with will pull that information from MDS and funnel it to you. And that's sort of like the best practice. But before adopting MDS and hiring one of these services, we will give you our dashboards that you can use, and it's a bit, it's not as comprehensive for a city, but it's at no cost to you before you decide, "Do we want to adopt an ordinance? Do we want to adopt MDS?" Et cetera. Another way that we differ from a lot of the operators is our in-house operations. In Atlanta, we have 35 or 40 full-time staff working for us, in addition to those of us on the executive team here in Georgia. Our staff in the morning, they put the scooters out. During the day, they respond to requests. In evening, they collect the scooters and take them back to the warehouse. As I mentioned earlier, we're vertically-integrated. All of our mechanic work is done in-house by trained and supervised mechanics. Some of the other companies, you sign up to be a repairman for their product, you watch a YouTube video, and now you're fixing a brake line. We don't think that's safe. We think everything should be supervised and in-house, and that's how we operate. The only thing we outsource is charging our scooters. So, anyone can sign up to be a charger, and every night at 9:00 PM, we put a bounty out on each of the scooters, and you see in the app how much that bounty is. It could be anywhere from $2 to $20. You can go around and pick up those scooters, take them home, charge them, put it out the next day, and we will direct deposit into your account the agreed-upon price within 48 hours. Some people make $5 a month. Some people make $600 a weekend charging. Sustainability, so we are very focused on sustainability. Our, one of our founding members is actually our now VP of Sustainability, Carol Browner, who was President Barack Obama's EPA advisor.
I accidentally killed the mics.
Sustainability is really important to us. One of our founding members is our VP of Sustainability. He recently brought on Carol Browner, who was President Barack Obama's EPA advisor, and she is one of our sustainability advisors. The app tells you how many grams of CO2 you save by using our product, and you can see that globally, we've contributed to a reduction of 30 million pounds of CO2 and 19 million miles saved. It's actually been a lot higher than that now. I need to update that 19 million mile number. And then last of the future, what we want to see. This is the future today. This is Santa Monica, California. When you build infrastructure, people create order. When you pull into Target and there are 50 empty parking spots, you don't park diagonally across three lines. You park between the lines even though you don't need to. When you give people a sense of order, they will comply. This is one of the issues we're facing in Atlanta where people don't know what to do. There's too many companies, there's too many scooters, and not enough direction. This is another reason I'm really into and advocating for this 90-day test here. I'm not saying Lime should be your only provider, but you should pick one, try it out, and then decide what works and what doesn't work in Columbus. That's my contact information. Please, you know, take a picture of that, write it down, whatever. But I'm always happy to talk about scooters generally and Lime specifically. Usually, Q&amp;A is the biggest portion of any of these talks, so.
We do have a couple of questions.
Yeah, of course.
Councillor Crabbe.
Thank you for your presentation. So, with the trial period having 300 mobility devices, how many jobs do you think that would be, create in this city?
I would have to talk to our ops team. I think probably like three to five full-timed for the 90 days, and then we would see from there. I also, I know someone said 300 sounds like a lot. I assure you, it's not even close to enough for what you need to adequately service this city. It's going to be in the thousands. Once you, if you decide how, I don't, I'm trying to learn Columbus. I've been studying. I was here for the day. I looked around again today. So, the geography is still a little like unclear to me, but 300 is nothing. Decatur has 75, and it's like not even close to anything to service them. They just happen by the modestage.
And Decatur is three square miles.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
So, if we were to bring in, say, you think we need 1,000?
I think 300 is like a fine number to start, because also you have to bear in mind, like, we are a business, and it is a lot of startup cost and a lot of hardware cost to do anything. So, to come here for 90 days and then be like, "Okay, we invested all this money. We did not recoup the money, and now you all decide we want to do a single provider town and go with a competitor." So, like, what was all that worth? So, we really want to assess and stay a little conservative on what we start with, and then figure out and try to be like a good community partner. Oh, something else I want to talk about, that list of cities that banned them. No scooter companies interested in going to most of those cities. The only one that they're interested in is Athens, Clark, and one of our competitors, who shall remain nameless, went in there, dumped a bunch of scooters there and upset everybody. But we try to be proactive, like I am here, and come and talk to cities and make sure that they want us there before we just show up overnight. Which I understand that's why those cities chose to ban. They were like afraid of that, but they have local resources. They, much like someone here mentioned, elected to just ban rather than have a conversation or figure out like what would work, what wouldn't work. And that's really what I'm about. I think a blanket ban is just such a backwards-thinking way to go. Don't we all wish we could go back in time and regulate Facebook, or Google, or Uber, or Airbnb in a better manner?
Yes.
This, we are knocking, yes. We are knocking at government's doors, saying, "Hey, let's collaborate." And the ones who are sticking their hands up, I'm like, "That's not very collaborative."
Well, and I think this councillor, that's what we're doing.
Yeah, exactly.
We appreciate the way you guys approach the business model, because, because there are, you have to, I'm sure you see this almost every time you go in front of a local government, but there's a lot of apprehension.
Legit.
But I think to councillor Crabbe's initial point, we've worked very hard to create an infrastructure that provides connectivity, particularly for the new generation that's coming along, doesn't want to drive a vehicle everywhere. And we've got this infrastructure. We're going to end up, right now, with about 70 miles of pathways. There's going to be multimodal uses on that. There should be a blend of pedestrians and other self-propelled devices. So, yeah, so I think it's certainly worth discussing.
I agree, and I'm really impressed with Columbus. Like, I'm from LA, and I was like, "Columbus." And I came down here and was like, "This place is really cool," which is why I've been pushing since March for HQ to really give Columbus a chance, if Columbus wants us.
Councillor Whitson.
Yes. Thank you very much for your presentation and your dedication. I can see your passion for it.
Oh, thank you.
I had a question for you. Are you going to set up stations, or they're just going to drop them anywhere? Are you going to do like they did in California in the trial base, or you just drop them anywhere? If you go to your last picture before...
Oh, in Santa Monica.
Yes.
So, we do not pay for any of that. That's all city infrastructure. So, I think we'd be open to building out infrastructure, but it would all be Lime branded. So, like, Santa Monica is agnostic, because, you know, they have multiple operators there. But if you want a Lime parking corral, like, I think we'd be happy to do that, but let's get the birds out of there.
If you built it in Facebook, I'd be happy to take it. Not a problem. I like the Lime color.
Yeah, thank you.
It's very pretty, very inviting. My only caution, and I'm not against it, I'm not against the trial, please understand that. My only biggest concern is, and I want us to be careful in the 90-days, is my residential, especially the historic district.
Well, and I think of Columbus, this is a new model for us, too, right? We don't really do these like 90-day pilots. Because Atlanta is so close, because we'll be able to mostly run it out of here, out of there for that time. Like, I don't think we'll set up a mechanic shop here. So, if scooters were repaired, we'd pull them out of commission, and then once a week or something, send them up there and send new ones down, or something like that. We'd figure it out. But I really think if you all elect to move forward with Lime for this 90-day period, Columbus would be ours to lose. Or ultimately, there wouldn't be enough ridership here, and we'd be like, "Okay, no one's using the scooters, and no one wants them, and this is not the right market for us." But I really like this idea of like, "Let's try it out. What does anyone have to lose within 90 days?"
Just watch my residence, that's all.
The, with the parking, though, so many cities across America are actually removing their docked bike-share systems, because a docked system doesn't really lend itself to micro-mobility unless there's a dock on every block, on every corner, like, just like there are for cars. But if you're trying to make a under-one-mile car trip used through some other means, and there's a corral two blocks this way, your final destination is a block away from that corral, you've now added three blocks of walking to a one-mile trip, people aren't going to use that system. You need to be able to go essentially door-to-door. Or if there is a parking spot on every block, then sure, when you go to Target, you don't get to park at the front door, you got to park somewhere within the lot. But you still get to park within the lot, not two blocks away. With the parking corrals, though, we do like those in high-density areas, and in fact, Atlanta's putting some in in Midtown, where there'll be about 20 preferred parking, but that's more for clutter and visual than for mandatory or designated parking.
My colleague was asking me, like, for parking them at night, would you be using our parking lot, or are you going to take them to Atlanta? What's the storage when you take them and bring them?
So, the products are out 24 hours a day, particularly for like third-shift workers to be able to use them when there's limited mass transit available. So, they're parked in the furniture zone, so within the first three feet in from the curb.
Oh, okay.
Where you have signage and newspaper stands.
The purple people are going to be helping them? So, we make sure we don't have them all over the sidewalk?
Yes.
Okay.
I also think when there's one provider, it is easier to get that education out there and to sort of control the users. So, someone asked about the, each product is GPS-enabled and tied to a single account. So, if there is a scooter that ends up on the roof of somewhere or something, who unlocked that scooter? We can look into that and go contact that person. And we have, and we do regularly terminate accounts for people who misuse the system.
We're excited from Uptown about smart cities. We're excited about, you know, the e-scooters, because it is, it's about gathering data. And so, these vibrancy reports that we put out, being able to collect this data and being able to share that with potential businesses or corporations that want to come to town, that's the kind of information that we have a trouble gathering, and I think that's exciting. I do want to point out that very early on, we were skeptical. I personally am very sold, and you can probably see why after hearing Nima speak, but, you know, we talked to the PATH Foundation, Dragonfly, we looked at the Riverwalk, and the PATH Foundation was very instrumental in the Beltline. And they said, they said, "Absolutely, you need to have these be available on the Dragonfly and on the Riverwalk. It is absolutely important for these to be accessible for the public to be able to get around on." So, I think that's a good thing.
Is there, is there an age limit?
18-plus.
18-plus.
You have to have a valid driver's license. That probably wasn't pointed out.
Yeah.
To even set up your account, you need to scan your driver's license or ID, verifying that you are over 18. Set up your initial.
Okay, so it has to be eighteen and above, and they have to have a driver's license?
No, it can be a passport, or a, or a ID, yeah, any sort of identification that shows you're over eighteen, to set up your account.
Okay, I'm nervous, but I'm willing to try it.
But that's the right attitude, right? Like, set the...
Yeah, I'm willing to try it, I'm just nervous, and, and Ross knows what I'm talking about, and he knows why. And, and Ross, I'm going to put it on you to release this pressure, stress out of me, okay?
We are bound to lose our quorum if we don't hustle and get on through the rest of this agenda. Counselor House, I think, your question, okay, we're, I think you can tell that everybody's interested enough to really have a stimulating discussion about this, so what's, what's next?
I think you all decide, like, do we want to do this or not? Once I have a, like, green stamp, Columbus is willing to give this a try, the math makes sense, like, where they're able to go, all that.
I think we need a full body of counselors to be able to get an accurate representation of what's coming on, so...
Mr. Mayor, I was going to say, we can do a follow-up at the work session and kind of talk about what's next.
Yeah, that'd be great. Listen, thank you so much for being here.
I, I just, I'm sorry to interrupt, I do want to point out that I think to get the right data, timing is important, too. So having the correct ninety days, that's, that's all I would clarify.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I, I think we'll be fine. I don't, but Clerk will, she's very short, it's just a timeline, and then the finance update, we can actually do the next thing.
Okay.
So...
Because we talked about updating at the next meeting, too, with the Government Center, so...
Yeah, this is just a timeline, it's going to be a one quick thing.
About seven minutes.
All right, well, let's, I'll tell you what, let's get started on it, that way we get it.
So I just wanted to give you an update on the Government Center, both the existing and the planning for the future. On the existing Government Center, we are moving forward with the life safety improvements, the stairwell pressurization, and the fire alarm system replacement is under design. We have our partners are here with us, 2WR, Heck Burdeshaw, as well as Aaron and Clements. If there's any questions, they're also here to provide responses. We anticipate August to have the RFP issued, and by the end of August, the final design to be completed, so that we can begin this construction in the September time period. The sprinkler system, they're currently evaluating our existing system, and they'll be providing options to move forward for consideration on the sprinkler. As far as the future planning of the Government Center, funds were provided for in the 2018 Columbus Building Authority bonds, and this was funding to provide certain planning and needs assessment studies, together with preliminary architectural and engineering services related for a proposed judicial and government center, that budget is just over one million dollars. So as you know, we looked at options, were developed for consideration, we held public meetings to get citizen input, the results were presented to city council, and we've continued to do further research, as you saw today with Mr. Woodward, we're contacting not just the state, but other counties who have recently or in the process of building judicial centers, to get obviously information from them as well. The timeline, we talked about for SPLOST, and how that relates to the Government Center, with a proposed timeline on the 2020 SPLOST, to be on the ballot in November of 2020, the first series of public meetings would need to begin by the end of this year, the last quarter of 2019. And how that relates to the Government Center is, it is about an eight-month process for us to go through the planning and design, the pre-construction and the cost analysis, as well as to review sites in order to meet this SPLOST timeline. It's about an eight-month process to come up with a budget, the needs assessment from the judicial consultant, in order to meet this timeline. So as the city manager stated, the plan to move forward is if council is, is ready to move forward with the planning process, to review those options and potential sites, we would come forward with recommended options and a timeline at the next council meeting or the work session, as was suggested earlier. And again, we liked what we heard from the state of Georgia and would recommend moving forward with a similar process, as far as procurement, the CM@Risk process that Mr. Woodward talked about earlier today.
And so, Mr. Mayor, unless there are questions, that's just a quick timeline update, and of course, we'll have more at the next meeting.
Thank you.
And with that, I'm going to conclude the city manager's agenda.
Okay. All right, we've got...
Do you have an urgent vote, or...
Just a resolution, we can hold off on the, if we could do the resolution in the minutes.
Madam Clerk, I'll turn it over to you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. For the Clerk's agenda, item number one is a resolution, Council in the August 6, 2019 proclamation session.
Motion second, Council, the proclamation session for National Night Out. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All any opposed? Passes.
Item number two, amendments of various boards to be received.
Second.
Motion second, amendments received, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? They are...
And, Mr. Mayor, those are our necessities, if Council Allen needs to leave the meeting.
Your excuse, sir.
We will bring the board appointments back for the next meeting.
Thank you. And I do have, I do have a nominee for the Youth Advisory Council, if you want that.
Mr. Mayor, we lost our quorum, though.
We lost the quorum?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I just wanted to get those two in before...
Not a problem, I can get her, I can enter her name in now, though...
Yes, and we'll...
Enter Kayla Green, and you can bring her back next time.
That is correct, Mr. Mayor.
We can't even dismiss the meeting.
Yes, that, that will conclude the Clerk's agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Ms. Alamein, thank you. Up, wait, I'm sorry.
Oh, excuse me, excuse me. On the Youth Advisory Council for District Nine, I would nominate Aidan Townsend, A-I-D-E-N Townsend.
Yes. Thank you, Counselor Thomas.
Okay, well, that's it for the Clerk's agenda now, ma'am, thank you for your patience.
Oh, well, thank you for your stamina. This is an amazing council, and in my eight-plus years here...
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I believe Council Barnes wanted to make a nomination.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Push, hit your light, there you go.
For Kayla, Ms. Kayla Hamilton.
Okay, and Counselor Woodson?
Yes, I have one, too, Michaela C. Henderson. It's M-A, capital C-A-Y-L-A, C. Henderson.
Okay.
No relation.
Any further nominations?
Yep, it's his daughter, no, I'm just kidding.
Counselor Thomas?
Representative, Counselor Huff has asked that we do a resolution to excuse him, so that may need to wait, though, until our next meeting.
Yes, we'll bring that back for the next meeting, Counselor Thomas.
Okay, any further business, nominations? Now, Ms. Alamein.
Thank you. Let me just say this, I've never lived in a city that I didn't grow to love, and Columbus is no exception. I'm originally from Atlanta. I'm a labor community organizer for over fifty years, I'm a change agent. Every city I've lived, I worked to improve the conditions of poor people. Columbus has a lot of poor people. Columbus is a dining and shopping paradise. If you're like all of you, and like me, where you can dine and shop and eat at Bonefish and do all, this is the place to be. But if you live in that area of Columbus, on Casita Road, you're in trouble. At the school board meeting last night, Mr. Jones came with Tad Number Seven, it's all about Midland, nothing for the South Side. That school boy spent the longest time ever talking about Tad Number Seven with a bunch of venture capitalists from Atlanta. I thought I was going to lose my mind. I'll speak before the school board on Monday coming up, and I'll tell them what I think about that. They didn't let me speak last night, because the chair ignored me, she was, rah rah the tad, superintendent, rah rah the tad, when this community voted to give thirty years to you as a council to have complete control over any economic development. I thought, who are these people? I voted no, because you don't give up those kind of democratic rights. That's who I am in your town. I never planned to stay, I've said it to you over and over and over again, I came here on a five-year plan, it's turned into a ten-year plan, because Columbus is the toughest town I've ever organized in, by far. You've got prison labor, God don't like ugly. The city manager complaining about his salary, he makes more than anybody. That's what I saw on the front of a Ledger Inquirer newspaper a couple of years ago. What is wrong? What is wrong? The School of America's Watch is coming back to Columbus, November 15, hundreds of people. I'm on the host committee. I bring money here. When I, when they told me they were coming back, I met with Roy Bouchard, so get ready, November 15, lots of money for Columbus. I can come back every sixty days on the issue of Georgia apple seed, because that's your rule, and I will follow your rule. I'll be back in sixty days, and nothing is done about it.
But you're welcome back if you have another topic, any meeting.
Oh, yeah. Oh, by the way, when were the grant proposals, the crime prevention thing, it's the 23rd of the 30th?
You know, I haven't seen it yet, I'm not sure when they're coming, I haven't communicated with Mr. Brown yet about when he's planning on bringing those to us.
Well, I'll check in with him, but I'll be at the NAACP 110th National Convention, that's July 20th through the 24th in Detroit. So if he's at the meeting on the 23rd, I won't be here, but I'll make sure other people from the organization, because I expect your support. The only person who should recuse himself is Mr. House, because if we had a board for the project, he would be on it. He comes to every meeting. You gotta recuse yourself, and everybody else don't have to recuse themselves.
Well, thank you, ma'am.
Just stamp it yes, like you always do.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, that wraps up our business, Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor, I just wanted to get one thing on the record, officially, in 1999, the Department of Justice initiated federal oversight of the Muskogee County Jail, and as you know, we've worked through various issues over the past twenty years, but I want to announce, to end on a positive note, that Judge Land on July 3rd in federal court has filed the order of dismissal of the federal oversight of the Muskogee County Jail, and I want to extend our hearty thanks to Sheriff Topkins for working closely with the Department of Justice over these last several years to get this done, and express appreciation, especially to Jamie Deloach, who all of you know, worked hard on this, and Lucy Scheftal, who has worked very hard to get to this point, so the order of dismissal has been entered, and that federal action for judicial oversight is now completed. Wanted to get that on the record.
It's very good news. A lot of folks worked real hard on that, I know the city, city manager's office worked on it, as did yours. All right, I don't guess we can take a vote to adjourn the meeting, but I can declare it ended, and I guess we'll have to deal with that when we meet again in two weeks. All right, we are, this meeting is ended.